Good evening. This is the regular joint meeting of the Oakley City Council. Oakley City Council acting as a successor agency to the Oakley Redevelopment Agency and Special Meeting of the Oakley Public Finance Authority. This meeting is called to order at 6:30 PM. Roll call. Councilmember Fuller?
Dr. Fuller is here.
Councilmember Meadows?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Henderson?
Here.
And I am Mayor Shaw present. Councilmember Meadows, will you lead us in the pledge? All right. Item 1.3 is proclamation recognizing eating disorder awareness week. Councilmember Williams, will you meet me down? National Eating Disorder Awareness Week. Whereas National Eating Disorder Awareness Week highlights the seriousness of eating disorders across the United States, particularly for women and girls of all ages. And whereas nearly one in 10 Americans are expected to develop an eating disorder in their lifetime. And whereas each of us has the power to show compassion to those who are struggling to receive the support and treatment they need and to promote a culture that treats everyone with dignity and respect. And whereas eating disorders are the deadliest mental illness resulting in 10,200 deaths per year, which equals one death every 52 minutes. And whereas eating disorders strikes everyone with documented instances from ages five to 80. And whereas eating disorders impact all races, but diagnosis and treatment have is half as likely for people of color suffering with the eating disorder. Whereas this disease impacts all genders, but with females being two times more likely to have an eating disorder. And whereas the yearly economic cost is $65 billion annually in the U.S. And whereas the rate of people suffering with an eating disorder has more than doubled since 2014. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Shannon Shaw, Mayor of the City of Oakley, along with the members of the Oakley City Council, do hereby declare February 24th through March 2nd as National Eating Disorder Awareness Week.
Awesome. So I'm going to read my notes so that I can keep it together. Thank you, Mayor, and colleagues for recognizing the importance of Eating Disorder Awareness Month in our community. Eating disorders impact millions of individuals and families affecting people of all ages, backgrounds, and experiences. They are not a choice, but serious mental health conditions with the highest mortality rate of any psychiatric illness. Here in our community, we have seen firsthand how these disorders can devastate lives, not just for those struggling, but also for their loved ones who are navigating the journey of recovery alongside them. Awareness and early intervention save lives. Access to education, treatment, and community support is critical in ensuring that those affected can find hope and healing. That is why it's so important that we continue to advocate for mental health resources, access to care, and policies that support prevention and recovery. I want to acknowledge the families, healthcare providers, educators, and advocates who work tirelessly to support individuals struggling with eating disorders. Your dedication does make a difference. Tonight, by issuing this proclamation, we are taking a step toward breaking the stigma and making sure that anyone battling an eating disorder knows that they are not alone, that help is available, and that recovery is possible.
All right, we're going to move on to item two, which is public comment. At this time, the public will be heard for items not on the agenda. I do not have, oh, let me check, I have a bunch more speaker cards, give me one second. I do have some blue speaker cards. If you would like to submit a speaker card, it is located in the lobby, it's submitted to the city clerk. The time limit to speak is three minutes. The time limit is monitored by the timer located in front of the mayor's seat. When one minute remains on the timer, it will be once as a reminder to complete comments before your time expires. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, or other outbursts so that everyone may have an opportunity to be heard. Note that due to provisions of state law, the council may not engage in dialogue regarding comments. Staff may be directed to respond to persons making public comments. I do have one speaker card here, Eduardo Martinez. It doesn't indicate what item it's on. Is it non-agenda? Eduardo Martinez? Nope. Did you, did you want to speak on non-agenda or a specific item? Thank you. All right, I don't have any public speaker cards for non-agenda items, so we're going to go ahead and close, close public comment. We are going to move on to item three, which is council member comments. Please remember that each council member has three minutes to speak, which will be regulated by the timer. Any council members have comments at this time?
4.1. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you're asking about, okay, yes, I wanted to say how wonderful I feel about Ms. Navarro and Ms. Nogras on our webpage. I haven't gone all the way through it, but I am glad to see that we have a read aloud section and a closed caption section, which isn't working right now on my computer, but don't ask me why, but on the, on the video. So when you watch it, you can get closed caption and real-time talking. So I'll have more comments, and I'm very appreciative of that. I, one other thing that I'm happy about was I just got notice a couple of hours ago that in all the chaos that's going back in Washington, that the Department of Education has reinstated to investigate offices, their own offices, civil rights for disabilities for students on the college campus who have complaints. That's a very key part of any post-secondary campus to have their accommodations or ADA met. And if not, they have a fallback that they can go to in terms of filing a complaint to investigate. So with that a close.
I also had a chance to go over the website, and I think it's, it looks great. I submitted a lot of questions to the, you know, ask all kinds of things, a couple of the links sent, one of the links sent me somewhere that was an unrecognized link, so I will forward that to you. But other than that, everything is amazing and awesome, and I've heard nothing but great things from the community that have checked it out. And then we are going to move on to the consent calendar. I do not have any public comment cards for the consent calendar. Are there any items that the council would like to pull?
4.1.
All right. Anyone else?
I move the remainder.
Same, second.
All right, I have a motion and a second for the remainder of this consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, Councilmember Fuller, 4.1.
Yes, same, same issue that I've had, this doesn't reflect on Ms. Nogras' ability to take minutes as she has been instructed, but I do not like the way that we have put together minutes at this time, so I will vote no.
I move approval 4.1, second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Passes 4.1. We are going to move item five, public hearings, which we have none. We will go into our regular calendar. 6.1 is consider a resolution approving the fiscal year 2425 mid-year budget review and adopting its recommendations for revising the fiscal year budget and amending the salary schedule. Jerry Tahita.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. We're going to get my report pulled up here. All right, so we are going to start with our mid-year review of our fiscal year 2425 budget. The state of the budget, our review, just for your knowledge, is from July 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2024. General fund revenues and expenditures are expected to be within the budget at year end. There are a few exceptions that we'll go through in just a few minutes. Other funds remain on target with the budget, and development is expecting to meet or exceed original budget numbers. And if you remember this time last year, development was well under the budget, so good news there. So for our general fund, we are anticipating property tax, property tax in lieu, and our property tax transfers, everything property tax to come in slightly above the budget, not significant this year. We're not asking for any budget adjustments. We are also anticipating that our franchise fees, cable specifically, our inter-fund charges and our sales tax are going to come in slightly under the budget. The net of those is expected to be pretty neutral, so no budget adjustments needed. Our budget remains balanced. We're not relying on any kind of one-time revenues to cover our ongoing expenditures. And unanticipated increases that we will ask for a budget amendment tonight are to interest income, our sale of property revenue, and our cannabis citation revenues. Revenues in general for the general fund are at about 59% of the budget. We should be, it's mid-year, we should be right around 50%. The revenues seem high. We had a one-time property sale of $5.3 million, that's included in that number, which skews the percentage just slightly. Expenditures are at about 54%, slightly above half, but those expenditures do include any encumbrances that might be an annual cost. I'm going to pause there and turn it over to the city manager, Josh McMurray, to talk about some upcoming library information.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, and members of the public. We, we thought tonight would be a good opportunity for us to update the community on the status of the library project. We've been working on this project since 2022, when we entered into agreement with the county to demolish the substation that sat on the O'Hara block, and we completed that demolition. And I'm happy to report that after that demolition was complete, we worked with the county on the transfer of the property to the city. The property has been transferred to the city, and one of the conditions of the cooperative agreement was that the transfer would only be for a period of three years to find funding for a, a library. And that, that caveat was carved out with the transfer, so we no longer have that obligation. That property is the city's free and clear for us to use for this kind of next phase. And as we, as we look into this next phase, we've done some previous work. We hired an architect and an economic firm to help us understand what we could potentially construct, both on the Civic Center site, with that being the library and community centerpiece, and then using the O'Hara block to generate revenue for the overall project. Because as it stands right now, CIP 318, which is the, the Library and Community Center project, that is funded with $7.5 million, and that makes, there's a, a combination of general fund monies, one-time money from ARPA funds that have been reallocated to our special project fund, and public facility funds. In addition to that, the Friends of the Oakley Library were challenged last year to come up with funding for the project, and the council set a very ambitious goal of a $28 million project. They spent a majority of last year fundraising into this year, and I know some of those members are here today, but, and they might want to, want to talk on this, on this item as well when it comes to the public comment section, but they've generated $980,000, which is such an impressive number for that group in such a short period of time. So with that money, in addition to the anticipated $2 million that we would receive from the sale of the property on the O'Hara block, we're, we're a little north of 10 million, so about $10,480,000. So that's, that's a funding update. As part of the mid-year budget report, we have identified an additional $3 million to be, that we are recommending to allocate from the general fund to this project, which would bring the total funds to about $13.5 million. And our estimate at $1,000 a square foot would mean we would be able to deliver to the community a 13.5 thousand square foot, about a 13.5 thousand square foot structure here at the Civic Center Plaza. So that is the, the recommendation from staff. We feel like this number, although it's a, a large number, we're still, as Jerry has described and will continue to describe, you know, our, our financial picture still looks good. We're able to complete all the projects that have been directed and prioritized by the city council, and this is an opportunity for us to try to build the first phase as, as big as possible from the get-go. So if you have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer that, but just wanted to give you some background and update, and, and, and the request is, is in the report tonight.
Do you want us to ask any questions we have on this section or wait until the end?
That, that would be your pleasure, if you want to ask questions now or, or wait?
Well, go ahead and, I guess, ask questions for, for this section. Councilmember Fuller?
On the question, I first, congratulations, and I'm glad we got the waiver on the three year part, that was one. Again, congratulations to Friends of the Library, that's a feat, almost a million dollars to put together. It's something to work on. I've actually talked to Mr. McMurray about the need for the Friends of the Library to be proactive on fundraising themselves and stepping out, and I'm glad he's provided the leadership and how to do that and continue. I'm glad we found $3 million. I will probably raise a few eyebrows, but just before, I'm, I'm looking to myself at, how can we fund this? And I went just about an hour before I came and got a cursory search of records of, of property in Oakley, and from the northwest corner of Main and East Cypress to about two parcels west of the northwest corner of Main and Finish Parkway, we own 18 properties. That it shows is one way or another, and I don't know quite whether, if they are encumbered or not, but they are an asset that I'm thinking that if we want to transfer it over, we would get perhaps more use or greater return on it for putting the library and getting people coming back for that. So I just put that out there.
All right, no other questions on this section? I, I also think you guys have done an amazing job, but we'll get into that a little bit later. All right?
All right, so moving on, our general fund mid-year requests are as follows. We're asking to increase interest income revenue by $400,000. Interest income is doing very well in the current market and expected to come in higher than the original budget. We would like to increase the sale of property by that $5.3 million that we received when the purchase and sale agreement was finalized with KB Homes. We also ask that that $5.3 million be moved to the capital projects reserve. We would like to increase the citation cannabis cultivation revenue by $171,000. That's what's been received to date. That is a number we don't typically budget for. We never know if or when we will receive that revenue, so we do not anticipate it. We, we have received the $171,000 to date, so we would like to increase our revenue budget by that $171,000. And an increase to consulting services for $50,000. These are for plan check services with development increasing. Our, our plan check needs are also increasing. Just as a side note, that expenditure is covered by development fees and not by, by city fees. We would also like to recognize the transfer of $8 million out of the general fund. $5 million of that would move to the street maintenance rehab fund, and $3 million would move to the general capital projects fund. The $5 million is for Cypress Road. It was on the agenda item that was on consent just a few minutes ago, but I did want to call it out here in the mid-year budget as well. And $3 million would be for the library, which was just discussed. The increase to senior programming and improvements by $185,000. We will go into an in-depth report on this in just a few minutes. It's $32,000 for internal staffing and another $153,000 for one-time building improvements and technology. So the total net increase would be $2.3 million. The total net increase to the general fund capital reserves is $300,000. The $5 million appropriated to the CIP 247 Cypress Road was also requested in that staff report to come from general capital projects, I'm, I'm sorry, capital project reserve. So on the previous page, we're moving 5.32 capital projects, and then with that staff report, we moved $5 million back out of capital project reserve. We also ask that we be able to transfer expenditure allocations from salary and benefit savings in the police department to cover overages that are going to occur in overtime and dispatch services. Although it's part of the line item budget, policy does not allow staff to move from salaries and expenditures that are approved with the budget into operating expenditures. And so we do believe we will have salary savings there due to vacancies and some long-term injuries. And so with that, we would like to move that salary savings, not ask for additional general fund money, and be able to cover the overages that are happening in overtime and dispatch services. And then also, we had an amended salary schedule attached. It removes the associate engineer classification. It reclassifies that to a senior engineer. We do not seek any additional money tonight for that program, but, or for that position, but it will add about $30,000 annually to additional budgets. And then to amend the pay range for the senior recreation leader classification, we just wanted to extend what that pay range looked like. We will be using that classification as some of our part-time staff for senior programming. In our other funds, our capital improvement funds and impact fee funds are expected to end the year above the budget. Development is showing good growth from the prior two years. The stormwater fund continues to need assistance from the general fund, and lighting and landscape funds continue to rely on the general fund. We still have two funds that continue to struggle there. Just as an FYI, we have a budget retreat coming up in April, and staff plans to bring a full global discussion about LADS and CFDs to the budget retreat. And then a replacement vehicle, it's a patrol vehicle in our fleet internal service funds. It was in an accident early this year. It's been deemed a complete loss by the insurance company, and so we're requesting $120,000 to be able to replace that vehicle. That includes the cost of the vehicle as well as the, the outfit of the vehicle. Continuing with other funds, increase Cypress Phase Two, which is that 247 that was approved previously tonight in, in the consent calendar, by $1 million in the road maintenance rehab, by $2 million in the traffic impact fee, and by $5 million in the street maintenance. That's not an additional $5 million from about three slides ago. Three slides ago was the general fund moving the money to street maintenance. This is allocating that street maintenance fund to the project. And then increase the CIP 318 by the $3 million. Again, we moved it out of general fund, and now we have to apply it to the actual project. And then lastly, increase the traffic impact fee revenue by $2 million. We do anticipate that revenue to be higher, and, and that is why we're able to fund more of Cypress Road out of traffic impact fees. And I think we already discussed the vehicle. This just breaks it down by line item expenditures. $90,000 of that goes to the vehicle expense, and $30,000 goes to the outfit. So with that, I'm going to pause. We have senior programming, a full presentation to provide, but maybe if we want to ask any questions on the mid-year budget before we get into that, that might be helpful.
Do I have any questions for staff regarding the mid-year budget review so far? Seeing no?
Then I'm going to turn it over for a few minutes to the city manager.
Yeah, good, good evening again. I just wanted to, to open this item because it's, it's an important item for the city, it's an important item for the community, and as you can tell, we have a lot of people here. I think it's an important item for the Oakley Senior Citizen Nonprofit Group that has been leasing the building from us on the O'Hara block that we've been discussing for well over 10 years. And when that lease started in June of 2013, the lease was originally drafted to be a 10-year lease, and in 2023, we started having discussions with the president of the Oakley Senior Citizen Group about the potential for the building to be demolished at some point in the future to make room for, at that time, we were talking about putting the library on that property. And since that time, things have since shifted to a housing project potentially on that site and the library on the Civic Center campus. But it, it is important to note that we have been engaged for quite some time with the Oakley Senior Citizen Group, and we have tried to be as transparent as possible over the past year and a half, two years as we, as we get to this point. And, and as it was becoming more evident that the, the building was going to be no longer there, it was going to be demolished at some point in the future, it was, it was our goal to transition the senior programming from that group to the city. We have a recreation center property that is used, it's used heavily, but we do have space on that property, as Jerry will go into more detail, but as part of this slide even indicates, we established a subcommittee last year, and we met a total of five times. And that subcommittee included staff, including myself, Jerry and her staff were part of that team, including two council members, now mayor and vice mayor, and four members of the Oakley Senior Citizen Group, two of them being from the board and then two not being on the board. And our intent there was to discuss the issues, talk about what programming could look like, what were the, you know, the, the programs that weren't being offered in the community but were desired to be offered, what spaces could look like. You know, we toured the existing senior center building, which quite honestly is, is, in my opinion, insufficient to, to house a senior program. I know it's been home to, to this group for over 10 years, but it's, it's not in great shape, and, and this community deserves better. And, you know, we're, we're requesting with part of this mid-year an allocation, and, you know, there's, there's reasoning behind that, but, you know, when we roll out a program, we want the program to be first class. This community deserves that. The community deserves a great space, and the, the condition of the space, although is acceptable and was acceptable for an after-school program, I don't think it was up to what needs to be for, for a senior program. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of benefit, and I think a lot of enhancement that we'll go over, that at the end of the day really, really gives the community more than is being offered now. And that's not to say what's being offered now isn't good, but we're, we're trying to improve on that. And I think the, the Oakley Senior Citizen Group has done- And I think the Oakley Senior Citizen Group has done a great job over the last decade-plus getting the community ready and us ready to this point. But we are ready to take it on, and we have a pretty comprehensive plan. And I just want to acknowledge the work that the staff has done. It's been a tremendous amount of work over the last several months to get to this point, and we're pretty excited about the potential for this. So, I'll stop talking. I'll hand it back over to Jerry, and she can outline the details of the program as we're presenting it tonight.
All right. So, we are going to start with, we had a subcommittee, right? We met just over five, about five times. And as Josh mentioned, staff is recommending the senior program to become a city program and offered by our recreation division. The current building that houses the OSC is scheduled for demolition in the summer to fall of two thousand and twenty-five. We've identified a dedicated space at the recreation center. The OSC can choose to remain a nonprofit in their own capacity, and all senior programming will be provided by dedicated city staff. So, we're going to talk about, we're going to start by talking about the space a little bit. The senior space was formerly the after-school program at twelve fifty O'Hara. In this building, there are two separate spaces. One is anticipated to be dedicated for lunch services, and the other would be dedicated as a social area for all seniors who register to be part of the, I don't know what you want to call this, membership, maybe a membership. The recreation main center, as well as Studio One, which is a small studio, looks similar to a dance studio when you walk in, is right behind the main building there, will be utilized for programming needs. So, what do we anticipate the programming to look like? It will be planned, organized, and overseen by city staff. We anticipate most instructors will be contracted instructors. City will have staff to oversee day-to-day operations, whether that's setup and takedown of a program, whether that's lunch services, whether that's maybe overseeing an activity that the city is going to put on. Contract instructors, the intent of the program would be that we would pay contract instructors between fifty and a hundred and twenty-five dollars per class. We would anticipate those classes run between an hour to an hour and a half, depending on the program, and the cost would depend on the needs of the program. Some, you know, if it's an exercise class, may not need a whole lot of supplies versus a cooking class where they would be getting instruction on cooking as well as getting to consume whatever they make at the end. So, those types of things instructors would require a little higher fee because they have materials that go with it. Some of our potential contracted programs that we would anticipate, some are currently being offered by, at the current senior center, and others would be new programs that we would implement. So, those types of things would include self-defense, dance, cooking, fiber arts, cane dough, ukulele, exercise classes, and we're looking forward to so much more than that. And then, potential city staff run events. We would do things like a movie Monday, or maybe we have a separate holiday celebration during the holidays. Those types of things, the city staff would run those activities. We would partner with Cafe Costa, which is with the county. We have met with them. We have talked with them about the current program. We have talked with them about what that program looks like if the city takes over the programming. They are currently serving one day a week. That one day a week is in partnership with Meals on Wheels, who comes in and assists with that service. If we partnered with the county, the Meals on Wheels assistance is not provided by the county. They would offer us four days of lunches per week, Monday through Thursday, but their budget would not allow to also include the services of Meals on Wheels. So, that would mean we would have to provide a, what they call a cafe manager. We're going to see that as a senior recreation leader who would be trained and responsible for receiving those meals, for distributing those meals appropriately, and making sure they're served daily. The Cafe Costa program requires six dollars per meal for seniors under sixty and requests a donation of three dollars per meal for seniors over sixty, and this would be paid by the participating senior. And these types of things are things our part-time staff would have to do. Every day, we have to take those menu orders. We have to get them to the county. We have to collect the funds and pass that on to the county. So, we are definitely the means to get the meals here. And then, the increase of service days, I think this is also important. It would not be in effect until July first to coincide with the county's budget. We would, if we moved before July first, we could still continue the one day of service that is currently provided at the new facility, but we would not be able to do the four days until July. I also wanted to mention, and I left this out of the staff report, it's not necessarily related to senior programming, but it's something that we have been talking with Meals on Wheels. They do currently provide a service on Fridays. They deliver meals to seniors who can't come and get those meals, and they deliver seven days' worth of food to seniors here in Oakley. We would continue, or we would plan to continue, that partnership with them. They would do that through the recreation center now at that facility. So, total cost, staff estimates a cost of about a hundred and thirty thousand annually. Half of that would be for our internal staff, part-time staff. The other half of that would be for contract programs, supplies, and those types of things. The building has some one-time needs. We are estimating those to be about a hundred and fifty three thousand dollars. While the center doesn't necessarily need flooring, within a few years, it will need flooring. Now makes sense before we have to interrupt programming and interrupt the program that's in place. If we can do all of this now before bringing the program over, it would be really beneficial. Flooring paint, window coverings, push-button accessible doors, outdoor awnings to make sure we're protected from the elements. We would like, one of the rooms in the current space would be for serving food. We would like to have running water in that building where if something spills, we're able to clean up. If somebody needs to wash their hands, they don't have to go to the restroom to do that. There would be a facility right there to utilize. It would include storage cabinets, furniture for not just the eating area, but also for the social area, program supplies, first aid, technology. Staff has done a really good job of trying to make a list of all those little things we need down to, you know, garbage cans and all of those things. So, we feel the hundred and fifty three thousand dollars will help us achieve getting the building ready to go. So, we had an opportunity to apply for a grant back in December. I want to shout out Troy here because he helped me. We spent several days writing a very lengthy grant that we found out about by chance. It happened to fall in our laps, and we had a few days to pull it together and get it submitted to the county. The funding is provided by Measure X. It's specific for public organizations or nonprofits who are specifically serving seniors. The applications would be accepted for projects up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per project, and they anticipate funding in March of two thousand and twenty-five. As I mentioned in the staff report, we were hoping to have answers tonight. Still waiting for those answers. I'm hopeful for next week. Staff has applied for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to cover the one-time cost of the building upgrades as well as two years' worth of contract class instructors and supplies that we would need. The grant does not cover internal staff. We have been notified by the county that we have been selected as a recipient. What we haven't been notified is how much we will receive and how soon we're allowed to spend those funds. It is a reimbursable grant, so we would have to spend first and then ask for reimbursement. But we need the county to provide us a clear day of when they would reimburse. You know, if I have an expense on March first, but the grant isn't approved until March fifteenth, will they still cover that expense? So, those are the things I'm waiting for. I don't have answers for. I'm pretty confident that our two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we asked for, that the expenditures are covered by the grant. So, we're very hopeful. We're very hopeful. The plan would be that the City of Oakley senior program will serve all seniors ages fifty-five plus. Services will be provided Monday to Thursday, nine AM to two PM. The cost to register for the senior program will be twenty-five dollars annually, and registration will allow seniors to participate in all programs, take advantage of all social time, and participate in any specific event or special occasion that is put on specifically for the seniors. So, when we pay a contract instructor, we're not asking whoever's participating in that program to pay for that program. The twenty-five dollars annually would allow them to participate in that program. Timing has been difficult to determine for us. We would like to move as quickly as possible, but we also believe it's important that we pause and wait for those answers from the grant so that we know what our budget would look like for the future. If we receive the grant, we would only have to cover our internal part-time costs, and everything else should be covered by that grant, which is a tremendous help in transitioning the program. The team has been working behind the scenes to try and prepare that as soon as we receive that notification, as soon as we receive council's approval to move forward, that we're ready to go and we can get the facility up to speed as quickly as possible so that we can welcome the seniors. So, as part of that, to keep things moving, we're asking council to allocate the hundred and fifty three thousand dollars in those one-time costs coming from the general fund. This amount would only be used if the grant doesn't come through. So, by allocating it tonight, it allows for us to start the process much sooner as opposed to waiting for the next council meeting to get that authority. And then again, should we receive the grant in full, we don't anticipate needing the hundred and fifty three thousand dollars. And then, just a quick look at the future. Staff is excited. We're excited about this opportunity. It's new for us, and we look forward to welcoming the senior community. We understand this is tremendous change, and change is never easy. We don't expect to get it right the first time, but we are committed to making it work and to figuring it out along the way. So, we want the space for our seniors to feel something they can be proud of, something the city can be proud of, and we want them to be able to call our new senior center home. So, with that, please don't get into all the details here. This is just a potential layout. Nothing is set in stone. But I did want to provide, you know, kind of the thought process behind what the rooms would look like. We would have a space for, you know, serving lunches, which is the one kind of here on the bottom right. And then, we would have a space for socializing. We would have some soft seating, some tables. We would have some computer stations that could be utilized, all kinds, you know, games, those types of things that would be available in the social space. And then, again, just an example to provide, the idea is to provide programming multiple times a day, multiple types of programs, programs and activities. So, this is kind of an idea of what it could look like, right? We could have a program at nine in the morning and another program at eleven. Maybe you want to attend both, or maybe you only want to attend one. It's going to be completely, you know, up to each individual. Maybe we have an activity in the afternoon after the lunchtime. We will always have social time. So, when the senior center is open from nine to two, everyone is welcome to be there from, you don't have to participate in a program. And then, you know, there might be some days where there could be a special activity, or maybe there's a day where it's a longer activity. This is just kind of what every day might look like. I think that ends my presentation for senior programming. Lastly, this is just kind of a look forward. I'll get this out really quick, and then we can go into questions. This is just a look forward of what's to come. Staff is behind the scenes currently working on the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. They are due to finance in March tenth. And then, something to look forward to, we have our budget retreat coming up April fifteenth. And with that, I am happy to take any questions.
All right. Questions? Councilmember Williams.
Yes, great.
Sorry, it's mine.
Councilmember Williams.
Williams.
Okay, I have a bunch of questions. So, when you showed, and I know you said not to get into the details, but I'm very sorry. That's what I do. So, you showed the pictures. How much space, how many people can be here at one time? How are we going to expand that when this is wildly popular? Those are some of my initial concerns just with that space.
I believe this shows seating for forty-eight. I can't read the little, forty-six?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four, thank you.
At tables.
At the tables, correct. Fifty-four at the tables. I think there's another, like, eighteen at the smaller tables. I think that they're seating for ten or twelve at the soft space areas. We have to start somewhere. And so, this is our start. We hope that it grows. We hope that it gets bigger. If we get to a point where we're outgrowing the space, obviously, that would have to be another conversation.
Okay, and then, so you talked about...
I'm sorry, Jerry. It was sixty-six. I counted them all at six.
Thank you.
Thank you for the math. I appreciate it. Okay, so, great. And then, so, potentially, we'll have some contingency plans that we start building in for when it's expanding. Okay, and then, what sort of feedback loop are we going to have, right? Like, so, I know, just being next to the Antioch Senior Center, there is programming and social stuff all day long, and they have little drop boxes everywhere where they can say, hey, this is what we want to see more of. We need this. Are we going to do something like that? Or how are we anticipating there's going to be sort of that feedback loop?
I would a hundred percent anticipate we have something to that effect. I also know that Troy and I have talked multiple times about what this looks like for us, right? We want this to be successful. And so, I know that I've committed, once a week, I will be there. I will have lunch with the seniors. We will discuss concerns and hopefully, things that are going well and all of those things. I know Troy's committed to doing the same. We'll hopefully split days where that way, you know, we're there at least two days a week to receive that feedback in person as well. But we will definitely have a space where they can provide that feedback.
Okay, and then, just in terms of the proposed programming that you started, how does that compare to what's currently being offered? Do you want to call out, you did, you know, maybe Josh, I don't remember. One of you said they're doing a great job because it is volunteer-run, so that's a lot of burden on them to do. But in terms of like-for-like, are we getting an increase in programming currently? Or are you just sort of maintaining status quo till we can figure out what's popular and what goes next?
So, I think we have a mix of both going on right now. I know Troy has met with many of the current people who are offering classes, the current volunteers, right? Because that's what they are right now, is volunteers who are offering classes, who have said they would like to continue offering those classes in the capacity that's being presented tonight. We've also reached out to some of our youth instructors who provide things like a cooking class and those types of things where we can expand that into also senior programming. So, our goal would be to grow what is there now. Until we had council approval to move forward with this, we haven't been able to secure contracts with instructors, right? So, we have concept, and we have verbal, like, yeah, we'd be interested. But until we get to the point where we have authority to actually sign those contracts, I wouldn't want to give you, like, for sure, we're going to have these classes.
Okay, and then, my last question is, just left my head, actually. I'm not going to lie. All right. I'll come back to it, I'm sure, when we do discussions, but there was one more. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Fuller.
Yes, first, thank you. Close captioning is up. I use it. So, it's up for, when I said it wasn't, somebody corrected. Second, excellent work in my mind.
Thank you.
Excellent use of resources. I appreciate what you've done. Much detail and a flow to it that makes it. So, I appreciate that. In that, the one thing that I, reading through and going through it and talking, the one disadvantage that I see, and maybe you can address it, but is a lack of public transportation in the area. So, how will we handle the transportation?
To be honest, we haven't got into those details yet. We would be glad to come back with something on that, but we have not gotten to all those details.
Okay, I think it'd be nice to have available. The closest one I can think of is across from St. Anthony's is a problem. The closest one I can think of is across from St. Anthony's is a problem, or down the roads in Laurel. So it's ways. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this won't turn off.
All right, I have a couple questions. So the current volunteers that you're talking to now that are interested in becoming instructors, they would be from volunteer to paid instructors? Would they, or would they still be doing it on a volunteer basis?
They would have the option to continue to do it on a voluntary basis, but we would also be offering them the same as any other instructor to pay them.
Okay, and then I have another question. Is there going to be space for items like six-foot tables? So when they do sewing classes, which I know they're a lot easier to cut their items, I see the tables here are circled, and you said don't pay attention to details, but I think of that when...
So this room would be the social room. This isn't where the programs would take place. So if we had a sewing class, we have the studio and we have the great room. In those, we would provide whatever that program needed, right? So if it's a table for a sewing machine, if it's food for cooking, if it's, you know, supplies for art, whatever that would look like, that would be part of the expense of the programming expenses. And so we would also have part-time staff on site that would help set up those programs, take down those programs. So those programs would be in Studio One and they would be in the great room, depending on the program and the needs of that program.
Okay, and then another question I have, and I'll save the rest for discussion, is, and I'm hoping that the rest of the council can back me on this, is, is there a potential, because we are not going to be having a full year of programming, we're talking about the cost of $25 per year, to either do an introductory rate, since we are just starting, and you did say we're going to have to get the kinks out, or a prorated rate, since it's only half a year, or maybe, depending on the temperature of the council waiving the remainder of this year while we're working out programming, and then they could start paying for 2026?
I think any of that is possible at the direction of council.
Awesome. Okay, I just wanted to put it out there, make sure that was something that we could do, or, I mean, I know we can, but, and then I will save the rest. So Councilmember Williams.
I remembered what my question is, and I also would like to throw support. I think we should, because it is a testing, I think we should waive the fees for this year, personally, just so that we can work it out and there's no economic impact to people, especially people who have maybe paid already for the existing one. So that would be my preference. But my question was, what are we going to do? I know we have the budget coming up and stuff, but we are going to be able to figure out how to continue funding this program? It'll just roll into any one of our other, like, rec programs, basically? Correct. So as part of the mid-year budget review, I don't know if you saw the last portion where it was talked about the 10-year plan. So anytime staff comes to you with any kind of recommendation, we first go to that 10-year plan. We don't bring that full plan to you, except for once a year during the budget, but we do utilize that plan throughout the year to make sure that what we're asking for is can be maintained into that 10 years. And we have plugged those numbers in. We kind of escalate up to what that $130,000 looks like, year one and two. It's not $130,000 that we need, so we don't look for that in the 10-year plan. By year three, we have that, plus the 4% escalator that we anticipate costs to go up. So that is included in the 10-year plan. We'll go into depth in that when we get to the budget retreat in April. But it is there and we do anticipate we can withhold the fees. Okay, awesome. And then my very last question, I promise, for this far, is, you know, we've been offering youth programming and every programming for forever, right? At what point did we introduce the Oakley Youth Advisory Council to sort of get their input on things in the scheme of when we were offering programming? And while I think we need to get the program up and running, at some point, could we bring back a discussion about the needs for like an advisory committee sort of situation? I would like a multi-generational, generational advisory committee, but... I think that's doable in time. I think starting a new program is going to be hard, and while we've, I think, done our homework, right? We're going to run into the unforeseen things that we didn't anticipate, and I think giving staff just some time to digest that, make changes. We know it's not going to be perfect. We're not going to stand up here and pretend like we have the perfect program to present, but it is going to be done with good intentions. And I think giving us some time to work out those kinks and come up with what does the program really look like? And then at that point, once we have that, I think coming back to council and entertaining those ideas would be appropriate.
I would support in the future, an advisory. I think for senior programming, it should be senior, so we can disagree on that. If and when that time comes, I think, like you said, we need time to work out our internal kinks, and with having like suggestion box or whatever it is, that's going to look like our sitting down and meeting with them for lunch. But if that time comes, I just want to put it out there that I want to make sure that there's seats for some that are in the current club and then some that maybe aren't, so we're getting a general consensus of all the seniors that we're serving.
If I could too, just because, you know, I think it's really important when we start talking about any kind of program or thing that we're entertaining that's new, we've got to set expectations, and I think expectations need to be clear. And from my perspective, I would request the council, if we're going to entertain, you know, some kind of advisory board, that we wait at least a year to put that in place.
Yeah, it's hard to advise on what, without it happening. You need to see it happening before you can advise on what works and what doesn't work. So I accept that.
Yeah, and I agree with that. That was why I was asking, I mean, we've done youth programming for forever and didn't introduce the advisory council for a long time, so...
All right, seeing no other questions from the council, I'm going to open it up to public comment. And I have this separated in two sections. I have a few that had asked to speak about the library portion of it, so I am going to start with Liz Fuller.
Good evening, Mayor Shaw, Vice Mayor Henderson, city council members and city staff. I'm Liz Fuller. I'm the treasurer of the Friends of the Oakley Library. Tonight, I want to encourage the council to approve the additional $3 million in funding proposed by the city manager and staff for the new Oakley Library and Community Center. The city started with nine and a half million for the project, which would have built a nine and a half, 9,500 square foot library. With the additional, almost $1 million from the Friends and the extra $3 million from the city, we can build a building that is roughly 13,500 square feet. What does that really look like? It could mean more group study rooms rather than the one originally proposed, a larger conference room to accommodate the many nonprofits in East Contra Costa County who need a space to meet, a larger program room for both library and community events, a larger space for the Friends to sell books, which will allow us to raise more funds to provide more library programs and books to the community, and more space for books, we still have books to, and computers, tables, and chairs. It feels like this is the one shot Oakley has to make this library the biggest, the best, and the most useful building it can be while working within the means of the city's budget. This building will probably last for about 50 years or more, and will have a lasting impact on Oakley's residents, including children, teens, adults, and seniors. Take that extra step and commit to supporting this wonderful addition to Oakley's community. We've worked for 25 years to get Oakley a library it deserves, and this is the moment to make that happen.
Thank you. Lorena Campos.
Good evening, council members. I'd like to voice my support for this staff recommendation to allocate the additional $3 million from the general fund towards the library and community center project. The Friends of the Oakley Library have spent the past year informing residents about fundraising efforts for the library and community center and its implications. During outreach, we've consistently heard strong support for the project. There's actually a widespread assumption that the library construction is already underway, so I just think that that emphasizes the support from the community. We want to be clear, public support exists for investing in a long-neglected vital resource for our city, a standalone library community center. Every thriving city needs these resources, so we urge you to prioritize this investment and approve the additional $3 million for the library and community center. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we're going to move on to those that wanted to speak about the senior center portion, so, oh, all right, come on up.
I'll find it.
It's so good. Mayor Shaw, Vice Mayor Henderson, city council members, my name is Angela Lowry, and I'm here this evening as a resident homeowner to speak on the library. I'm also a member of the seniors of Oakley. I'm also a very proud member of the Friends of Oakley Library. So when the city set that extremely ambitious $1 million target for us to raise money, of course, we started thinking big picture, and we were very successful, $400,000 from the leisure center and a lot of other things that we did. But when Liz Fuller contacted me and said, can you come and help? Like, we need to get this money. What I really started to do was think about, really, it's sometimes not the big dollars, it's the little dollars that add up. So what we did is we started an email campaign, calling, I literally went door-to-door with businesses to try and get funds and gift cards and a lot of diverse fundraising options that we could do that. So tonight, I wanted to come down and share just some of those businesses with you so that you can start to see that it's not just a few of us here in the audience tonight, but when I went and talked about a library community center downtown and what it would mean, not just for, you know, library patrons or, you know, students, whatever, it was really for the entire community, for the future, for the economy, for our community, I was overwhelmed by just the great support that we received. So I just want to share a few. Whiskey Tango Fox Restaurant and Bar, Great Clips for Hair, Sarah Pope Photography, Dutch Brothers, Trader Joe's, Amazon, Safeway, Mount Diablo Resource Recovery, Beauty Town Salon, Contra Costa Firearms Training, Diamond Hills Spa, The Beer Isle, Black Bear Diner, Cypress Self Storage, Dream Vacations, Delta Schools Federal Credit Union, Golf Ballin', Good Sense Florist, Guantanamo's Ice Cream, Hairy Hounds, Muddy Paws Grooming, Oakley Ace Hardware, Oakley Grocery Outlet, Bacanté Mexican Restaurant, Brayley's, the Rotary Club of Oakley, Sabrina's Pizzeria, Safeway, Skipolini's, Target, The Press, Yogurt Island. I could just go on. That's just sort of the tip of the iceberg, and I don't want that light to flash at me. I just want to share a game with you, just a few, again, when I went and talked about what this could mean for Oakley, the residents, for businesses, and just for our community, it was overwhelmingly positive. So personally, I'm very passionate about the future of our city. I'm not going to tell you today to support this or to vote for it, that's for you to do at the dais, but I came tonight just to share my voice on behalf of others who have financially supported this, and just to say they care and they want you to please support too. Thank you.
I did find your card. It just said budget, so you were on the bottom. All right, so Donna Baker.
Hello, everyone. We sent you earlier today a detailed list of 18 suggestions to the city from the Oakley Senior Center Board. Number 19 is missing, which was asking for a debatable later. I wish to thank you all for your hard work, including, to include Oakley senior citizens in your mid-year budget. Oakley seniors appreciated the open dialogue we had with all of our meetings prior to and during the subcommittee meetings. The city listened to and acted upon our suggestions. It is our wish that the open communication will continue into the future. When we were on the verge of closing due to lack of funding, the city assisted us in repaying our monthly bills, our monthly utility bills. The board has run all of our programs on a very tight budget of $30,000 to $40,000 a year, much cheaper than you anticipated on your end here, with local businesses assisting us. When we discovered that our kitchen was too small for a community spaghetti feed, the city allowed us use of the recreation main hall for future fundraisers. In many ways, the city has already had it hand in our senior center. We were very excited to learn that the city has been selected as a recipient of the grant. The grant will help secure our future. Everyone is grateful to the city and that you are willing to refinish the recreation center number two. When we moved into 215 Second Street, our membership took over the property from Halo and the fire department, and as is condition. The seniors, with the help of friends, family, local businesses, and several nonprofits, we all worked together to make the senior center into what it is today. The elected board of the Oakley Senior Center would like to work with the city to ensure a smooth move and a transition to Park Room Recreation. Together, we can not only meet the needs of our seniors, but expand the activities, classes, and services. A senior center is much more than a place for classes and meals. It is a place where seniors can socialize, celebrate, and help each other in good times and bad. We are a valuable resource to not only the seniors, but to the entire community. Oakley Senior Center has always operated as an extended family, and is with heavy hearts that we say goodbye to our home, but now we are including the city as our extended family. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Henry Sayada. I moved to Oakley in 2006. In 2014, well, it was 2013, my wife went to the Oakley seniors to see how it is and have her mother join. She joined the next day, the next month, she brought me along, and she was elected secretary. And later that, in 2014, I volunteered to take over the newsletter. In 2016, I was elected to the board. So I've been with the seniors for pretty much their entire existence at the fire station. We did build it up, working very hard, and to get it going, and we did it all as individuals. I am currently the vice president and I'm in charge of membership, and already I've collected dues for at least 100 people and more are coming, so it would be a good idea for the city to defer collecting dues until next fiscal year. My problem with the budget is the access to the building. We have, from 9:00 to 2:00, that's five hours a day, and we use the building more than five hours a day, and it's four days a week. And we use the building more than four days a week. And other than that, I understand, we won't have access to the building. So I would like that we should have a key to the building instead of having to go to the office and ask for permission to access the senior center, just for our needs at the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Rosenbluth, on behalf of Delta Squares.
Good evening, Mayor Shaw, Vice Mayor Henderson, council members and staff. I am Ellen Rosenbluth, on behalf of the Delta Squares. We are an Oakley Square Dance Club, and currently, we are at the senior center on Monday nights for two hours. We've been talking with staff, and staff has offered our group to be able to continue as it was presented here today. The problem is, again, access to the building after hours. We're there now Monday nights, and some of our members, even though they're seniors, are still working, and so we're hoping to continue square dancing in the evenings. The other issue with us is, is we were wondering if the city would consider keeping things going as we have them going now, which means we're there after hours, we hire our own caller instead of the city bringing in a caller, and the way the rules seem to be going to be soon is that everybody that's there has to join the senior center and be a senior. We're trying to grow our club, and we're hoping to get more members that are not seniors, make it a mixed club. And right now, we have one person, but we're hoping to make it a mixed club, and so we're wondering if the city will consider actually just renting space at a reasonable rate in the evenings so that we can continue our club activities as they are, instead of having everybody fit into the new mold. Thank you.
Thank you. James Friedas. James Friedas.
God, everything I wanted to say, people have already said. I was going to talk about the Four Square groups. We also have the 4-H Club. We also have Meals on Wheels. We also have Oakley Veterans, Post Commander sitting right there, and we have some other organizations. But we had over 50 different programs until the coronavirus hit and we lost a lot of them. And I got a call one day from one of our members and they asked me to contact this young lady right here, Danielle, to go down to the rec center and meet with Troy. So she sent me an email, gave me a time, I went down and met with him. And he gave me the nickel tour. And I hate to say this, but I went back and I told Allen, our president at the time, that it's a great place, but we would be tripping over them and they would be tripping over us. And I think, we met with you, didn't we? Was it you and Troy? I think it was. A few weeks ago, Richard and I went.
It was Jessica.
Oh, Jessica, okay, I'll get you confused. So we went down there, we tried to work it out and come up with a solution. And we can't come in on Friday, so three events we can't do on Friday. We do the flea markets on Saturday, we can't do the flea market. So there's a lot of conflicted problems there, things that we need to work out. And the only thing I can see, and I don't know if the city wants to go that route, is they need to put another building in the back, back there, for us to have full time. Because one of the buildings, or the studios, I think they call them, we have to be out of it while kids are in there. I think they have a summer camp or something. And then they have the big building up front, we can't use it for most of the events, except Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Like I said, Friday, we, we have events, Saturday, we have the flea market, and that's about it, you know? And so I don't know what else to say, except that unless the city decides to come up with some, some building in the back that they could add, I don't know whether that's feasible or not, but that's about it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and guests. My name is Diane Merritt and I'm on the board for the Oakley Senior Center, also known as OSC. This fall, this coming fall, our senior center building is being torn down. Financially, the city is remarkable in inviting us to come to the rec center, rec here in O'Hara. The expense that will be covered is welcoming to the OSC and their members. Of course, we will have to have disabled parking accommodations, tables, and restrooms, which I don't know if that's been discussed. We do feel limited in only four days a week and less hours a day. We feel limited to not having a key or office phone. This is quite different than we have currently and do appreciate your listening to our needs. So far, for our seniors center proposal, has less hours open than the other senior centers. To fully utilize the new senior center to the fullest, we need our more appropriate opening hours, especially for the disabled. Thank you for listening to our needs and all your help in this planning for the OSC.
Thank you.
Mayor and rest of the city council, some of this has been talked about, the time limit. You're, you're cutting out more time on us, which makes less people wanting to come. We need full access at any time. We can't depend on somebody from the rec center or another person from the city to come open up for us. We need to be able to open up on our own because we do, do things on holidays and weekends. And I know we wouldn't be able to use it on all the weekends because the city has use for that area too. And you close for two weeks during Christmas? We're there during those two weeks. We're, we're there on holidays and you guys are closed on holidays. So how would we get in? You're, you're trying to help us, but you're trying to kill us at the same time, from what it looks like. That's all.
Thank you. I did have a card that did not indicate whether they wished to speak. LeAnn Seaman.
She doesn't know that she wants to speak. I need a microphone, so if you guys are okay with it, I don't want it. Can I just call on you?
It's recorded, we need it.
First of all, I want to thank you for acknowledging all of the volunteers that are here. Everybody, raise your hand if you're here from the senior center. Okay. We tried to show up in force to let you know that we really are concerned about what's going on. I want to thank you for acknowledging our board of directors and where they have brought the senior center to, how much work and time and effort they put into it. And I just feel they're getting a little bit robbed when they're not allowed, once the operations start, to have some input into what's going on. They've managed to run it fairly well for 10 years. I believe they can probably be very resourceful and help you guys operate it now. That, that's for that. Now, my big thing is the food program. And I know, I, they say I'm kicking a dead horse and I probably am, but I've heard that there's some on the board that have said, "Oh, there's other places in Oakley where the people can get their food." And there are. But a lot of our people go to more than one source for food because we can't provide them with all the food they need for a week. And we've been, we're kind of unique in the way we serve the food. We get it from some sources that, that are not available to other food banks. So it's, I'm going to say we're kind of a little bit of the elite of the food banks. And I don't know, my understanding, there's not room, or you think there's not room where we're going. You know, we have the refrigeration freezer, if we have someplace we can put it, we could operate relatively well as we are now in a, in a, not quite as big a space. So you might want to give some thought to it and, and if the answer is no, it is. But I, most of our constituents that we feed are very appreciative and are very upset that we're not going to be there forever. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then I did want to comment, I have numerous other speaker cards that indicated they did not wish to speak, but they will be entered into the public record along with the ones that came in online. So with that, I will close public comment. And I feverishly been taking notes, so I do want to address a couple of things. The answers to the days and hours, this is what the city's providing. The senior club, like any nonprofit, can reserve space at the rec center and have an evening activity if it's available. We, you know, we have reservations all the time, so that could be something you could work with the staff on reserving. If you have a holiday that you wanted to have a specific event, if it's available, you know. You're saying that you wouldn't have access when the days and hours are outside of what the city is participating, but if you reserved to have an activity, there would be a staff member there that would be able to open the facilities. So just kind of wanted to, to address that. As far as the disabled parking comment, adding the push buttons into this room is already going to be expanding the ADA access beyond what you guys have at the current location. So I did want to highlight that. The advisory, like we discussed, we, we got to give the city time to, to start the process. You can advise on what you don't know and we don't know what it's going to look like until we have a chance to, to pick it up. So that was mentioned. Then, oh goodness, I do want to thank, I do want to take this time, one, to thank the speakers about the library, thank you for that. But the majority of the speakers tonight, I, I want to thank the Oakley Senior Citizens Club, OSC. With this whole club thing, I'm not sure where it came from, but I want to thank you guys for all the work that you have done and all the things that you have provided to the residents. And I just want to ask for patience to give us an opportunity to provide some amazing services as well. That's why we suggested maybe waiving the fee while we're doing this because some of you have paid for that portion of your membership. And we're not pushing you guys out. You guys can still operate as a 501(c)(3). The letter that you had sent us gave us this kind of a layout of what other cities are doing. And, and I took it as a challenge to reach out to some of those other cities to see how their programming works. I got an answer from Brentwood today and I actually want to read it. And it said, sorry, I hate pulling my phone out during a meeting, but it said that the city staff, while they have open lines of communications now with the club at their board meetings or subcommittee meetings, the senior club does not have any say in who is hired or the city policies, and it is the staff that collaborates all the efforts with the programming and the events, and they are a complete separate entity from the city. So I got that answer today. I work with the Pittsburgh Senior Club on a regular basis. The 50-plus club that you mentioned is a completely different entity that just doesn't even have a dedicated space within the senior center there. It is 100% city-run and staffed. The 50-plus club is a private organization, 501(c)(3), that provides other options for their members at an additional rate to the membership than is the rate to the seniors at the senior center. And when the space does not provide, because the senior center is running programming, they're pushed out to have to find another location. In fact, they do their tai chi every year in my facility during tax time because the tax people are taking up the space in the senior center where they would normally do their tai chi. So all of these cities have different programming, while they all have a senior club or some version of it, they're all run by the city, but they've been run by the city for a long time. And so we're just trying to get it started. I do like the way that Concord's is proposed, which is the city offers instructional classes, activities, and special events. All services offered are coordinated through the city staff, but the club operates with an elected board of their own, their own individual finances, and it's completely volunteer-run. The club operates non-instructional social activities like card games, bingo pool, book club, and more. And that can still be done within the social area for where we're providing. So it was just some of the thoughts that I had and I did want to report on the homework that I've done on some of these other locations. I didn't get to all of them in the short time from when we got the email, but I did want to respond with the answers that I did get. And I'll stop talking and turn it over to Councilmember Williams.
Okay, sorry, I'm going to ask a couple more questions of staff now. I'm sorry, I'm very sorry. So we have the square dancer club who asked about Monday nights. How many evening, how many evening classes do we currently have, not senior-specific? Do we do evening classes at the rec center currently?
We do have senior, I, I'm sorry, rec program classes in the evenings on Fridays, on weekends sometimes. We do have those, I don't have an exact count. I'm sure Troy probably does, but. So, so we do have evening classes, that's exactly what I was thinking when they were asking about combining age groups and those types of things. We can offer a recreation program, just like we would any other program on an evening that is all age groups.
Perfect, because there is definitely something to be said. I know a lot of seniors still are having to work, so they're outside of those traditional hours and I feel like should still have some. And, you know, even though my friend over here does not believe in the multi-generational, I think as much as we can get everybody, as much as we can get everybody interacting, I think it will benefit both groups, right? Like, our youth could use some of that as well as vice versa, right? So, okay, good, I wanted to get the answer to that. So we've talked about, somebody mentioned, sorry I didn't take notes about who did it, but about tripping over people. Can you give me an idea of, like, and sorry, maybe this is Troy, but you probably know. Our average class size is currently, I know, it depends on what use, right? The great room is huge, so that would have a lot of space, but like Studio One, how much space are we talking? How many people could be interacting in a class in there comfortably?
Yeah, so Studio One's fairly large. I mean, we use it for, you know, gymnastics classes and dance classes for our younger, our younger, like toddler ages. Great room, obviously, very large, that can accommodate several. It is going to continue to serve the youth as well and I think that's an important thing that we talk about. We do have summer programs where senior programming might have to look a little different during the short six-week summer program. We don't want this to remove the programming for the youth at the same time. So we've, we've already looked at what those schedules look like and, and how we change programming during that six-week period. Maybe it happens all in the studio, maybe sometimes the social room or the, the lunchroom becomes studio to do a programming. We will have staff there to remove tables, put tables back. So we have thought about that. We've thought about it conceptually, right? It, it will be difficult. We do have a large summer program. You know, we have upwards of 100 kids at the recreation center during those summer times. We anticipate those to continue and we, we will figure out as staff how we manage that space.
And then one of the things we talked about was this different fee, right? So I guess my question, and this can probably just be carried forward for like the budget workshop, because there would obviously have to be budget for it. I know in the past, we've, you know, waived the summer camp fees, right, to the first whatever. And so to me, if there's going to be sort of this multi-generational, but the folks have paid for, to be part of this, like, would there be the possibility, if there's these classes, that people do want to participate in, is there something we can talk about putting in the budget that would make it so that they either get heavily discounted or even, we could talk about waiving, if something like square dancing was happening or, you know, there's a cooking class that they want to do, but it's at night and, you know, could we look at working that in into a future budget option?
I, I think there's lots of options there, right? If we're starting this program and realizing that there's an interest for senior activities in the evening, right, then, then maybe we program it to have some of those senior activities in the evening where we don't need to waive a fee. We still just charge the $25. Our part-time staff schedule can be scheduled whenever they're needed, right? Troy doesn't have to be on-site for a program to happen, right? I don't have to be on-site for a program to happen. So I think if we're finding there's interest and, and we're going to have enough to, to supply the program with enough people, right? If, if the interest is two people, I don't know that it's, we can justify paying staff to come in for that type of program or justify paying a contract instructor. But, you know, if we have a good class size that's interested and wanting to sign up for an evening class, I don't see anything stopping us from providing a senior program in the evening if that's what's needed. Again, the, the activity listing, the days, the weeks, the hours, those are all conceptual based off of, we're trying to get it off the ground, right? So I think if there's not a large interest, but we have an interest of multi-generational, then we would bring to council, what, what does that fee look like?
Okay, great, perfect. I'm done with the questions now and I think I'll just sort of do my discussion points since I still have my request to speak button on, sorry about that. I think that everybody's made like a huge effort and I really, I think it's important to note that change is really, really hard and I know that. it's important to note that change is really, really hard. And I know that for somebody who's used to something for a really long time, and this is the thing that you have to look forward to, I I absolutely 100% can empathize with how difficult change is. I think I want to just hearken back to what Mayor Shaw said, where we really are doing this because we want to provide a great experience for everyone, and we want you to feel like this is a very important part of the community. You know, it was one of the reasons why we kept pushing the city to make the community center bigger and bigger and bigger, right? Like, I talk about what's going on in West Sacramento, and, you know, they have a senior center on the bottom, and then they have a preschool on the top, and the two all interact with each other, and, you know, there's a community theater and stuff like that. So I think we want to make this bigger and bigger and bigger. But as everybody was listening to our budget, you know, we have all of this money that's going to East Cypress, which is a really, really important thing. We need our residents to be able to safely get out of an area. So we do have to make some really hard trade-offs. I just think it's really important that everybody in the room knows we appreciate all the work that has gone into this from everybody. I mean, you know, the volunteers have done a great, great job. And I'm the person who talks about food insecurity in Oakley a lot, so please don't think, even if there's a pause to that, there's definitely groups that are working behind the scene to fill that need, and we'll need volunteers so that everybody can still also get that part of it, right? Because I know that that's really fulfilling as well. So I just want people to rest assured that we're not just wanting to, you know, push people off to other places. We do have to make some really hard choices, but we want to create a program that is better, and, you know, like as Josh said earlier, exactly what people want and deserve. And I think if we can all just be a little bit patient as we go through this portion of it, we're going to create a great program that benefits everybody. So I just wanted to get that said.
Councilmember Fuller?
Are we allowing the discussion?
Yes.
Yes, to the senior center, just to be straightforward, I started talking about this type of design with Mr. McMurray three years ago, that the city needs to be responsible for the seniors to provide recreational facilities, to provide recreational activities. We are a demographic group. I am in that group. I will only have to pay $3 for a lunch. I'm almost up to the senior, no, super senior, but that's something else. But the bottom line is, is that I have sat up here, I have heard other seniors sit up here, stand up here, or say that the seniors are not being recognized, they're not being incorporated. In other words, they're being marginalized. We were being marginalized. The seniors were being marginalized out to the side, and the city wasn't taking responsibility for it. I thank Mr. McMurray for taking it, taking it in, and we are taking responsibility for it. We are creating a senior activity. We are creating a recreational aspect to our lives that has, that has been worked on very hard by the Oakley Senior Citizens Group, and I appreciate that. They have worked very hard. I've gone to lunch there, attended some of the activities. Mr. Perry was involved, Ms. Baker was involved. If we go back during the pandemic, Tim Lear was out there making sure all the seniors had food that they they could get. In fact, he actually had a heart attack and had to pull back during that time. So I appreciate all that's been there. But the situation that I'm seeing is that had to be done, because the city wasn't taking responsibility. I see this as a city taking responsibility, responsibility for the seniors. Food, food is very important. The Meals on Wheels, there's two things that the Meals on Wheels provide is socialization and food once a day. You go there and you leave it, and the person eats, and some of them, there's enough calories for a person for one day in the, in that meal on meal wheels. Here, we can have four days a week, maybe five, that they can come to the rec center and enjoy the socialization activities. I think we're all aware that we are in American society, we socialize around the dinner table or the lunch table, or wherever we go. So that brings people back together. We've, I've heard this is the lonely generation, and I tend to agree. I tend to agree. This is the lonely generation. We, after the pandemic, we all have tended to be loners and be alone. And I think we need to do, to have this in. This is a good start. I was very impressed with the amount of work that's gone into it, the amount of planning, the amount of activities. So the location, making sure, the one I did bring up, we need to work on, is transportation. I mean, we just, the transportation, public transportation is, I don't know. But but coming back to it, I hope, so I would go there, but I would hope that the Oakley Senior Citizens will continue to be involved, will continue to provide auxiliary. There are such things as bus trips down to Monterey Aquarium. There are bus trips up to Golden Gate Park, just as I know they go to, bus trips to the casino. But but taking that, taking seniors to these events, to these areas, is an opening. I, if you go to assisted living, they live to get on a bus and go somewhere. I'm not saying that we would be. So to go and visit, maybe go down to a play, and I believe the Oakley Senior Citizens could put that in, and have a lot to go. And I don't think that we are turning our backs on the Oakley Senior Centers. We are citizens. We are just ensuring that this will be an ongoing program. I remember one time talking to Alan Perry, they had the four refrigerators there, and they said, why is our electric bill so high? And we can't afford to pay it. Went through, and they were all donated, but they, I think they were from the 1950s. They just ran and ran and ran and ran. So that type of aspect won't have to carry. We have the money, we have the facilities, we have a recreation leader to bring it about. I don't know about the instructors, but I don't think any, any instructor that volunteers could certainly apply, applies, it applies standards to it. And and again, we make sure that it's funded, we make sure that the marginalized demographic is recognized and comes about. Since we also included the library, I'm all for moving the $3 million into where where we're going to general fund or reserve fund, library fund, moving the $3 million in there. I'm very happy to hear about the friends of the Oakley Library. I think that we need to continue to wait and see what will happen with the property next door and how much that will go there. They say, well, there's not much interest. And the chaos is going around the country right, right now. I don't think anybody's really anxious to put out a lot of money and buy something. So I think we have to let that calm down, and then wait for what may come about. We have that time. And I'm not being facetious when I mention the properties that we own. I'm not saying, and it's not right necessarily top here, but if we have additional properties that perhaps are not providing what we need, I would much rather see that money go into the library, to sell that property and put it into the library. Not only that, we originally talked about a four, a three-story library, one with the library, and then the community center, and then more for City Hall on top. So perhaps we could even reach, reach that goal. But I commend what's going on. I know it's very difficult. I heard Ms. Shaw, Mayor Shaw, talk about increases in, in production costs, and with the fires down in the LA area, the workers are just, it's going to be, they're gonna, salaries are going to skyrocket. But we still, I still say, we wait until April 15th and look at the budget again, and see what we might be able to do. So with those two subjects, I will support it. I thank staff for what they've done. It was a tremendous job. I have some other comments about the budget, but I'll keep quiet until we're ready on those.
Councilmember Vice Mayor Henderson?
I'm gonna break my comments into three areas. Let's start off with the, the mid-year budget and the presentation. It was excellent tonight. I think it lays things out very well for us, and we definitely need to support what staff is presenting to us tonight. Going into the library, there's been a great deal of work on the library. There's been a big promise to this community for a library since we became a city. And if you look back to 2016, and going out to the public for a vote, and that vote not passing, but when they were looking at building that library, we were looking at around $13 million for that library at that time. And you look at what costs have done, and now you're looking, you know, for the same library, we were looking at $28 million. With the money moving tonight, puts us in about a $13 million thing. I think we need to move forward with this library as soon as possible, because we know the longer we wait, the higher the costs get. But I think when we go out for bid and design on that, we build this design so this library can be added on to at, you know, minimum cost. So it's built to expand in that design. So if in three years or five years, there's the additional money to add 5,000 square foot to that library, or add a second story to that library, we're already there. We've already thought that process out. We're not kicking ourselves. Why didn't we spend those extra, you know, $1,000 or two to have that in the plan? But I, as we go into next year's budget, as we go this, I think we really need to move forward on this library sooner than later, because otherwise councils in the future, we're going to still be talking about this library. And I think we're beyond that. We owe the community that. As far as the senior center, we put a good group together as this subcommittee, and it wasn't just, you know, stand around, go, well, maybe this, we toured the senior center, we toured the rec center. Staff did an incredible amount of work of putting something together. Is it the Cadillac that everybody wants? Probably not. But it's a great start. And again, like, as we talk about things, it can be built upon, it can be improved. I very much support the idea that was discussed tonight of waiving the first year's fees and putting those fees starting in 2026. I also believe that it would be too early to put a committee together or advisory committee. I think we got to let our great staff run with their idea, maybe have a hiccup or two as we're working through this, but put the program together, look for feedback, and move forward with it. Again, we'll find out what we end up doing with the grant. We'll see this as we do next year's budget. But approving the money today to move forward with getting this going. So we're not talking about moving the senior center. We have a plan. We're putting it together. We are making this work. And those are my comments for now.
Councilmember Meadows?
Jerry, thank you for the presentation. Thought it was a good presentation. I support the library. And and just to clarify, we've been talking about a library here for over 30 years. I mean, I remember sitting on a advisory committee when Freedom High School was being designed, before it started being designed, and talking about a community library on the Freedom High School site, not the library that's there, but a full-blown library. So that goes back to summer 1992. As I, I'm okay with waiving the fees for the seniors through the end of this year, calendar year. So, and I assume you would need that in a motion, waiving the fees?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to approve item 6.1, waiving the fees for the seniors through the rest of this calendar year.
I'll second.
I have some further discussion on?
Yes, I was gonna say, I know Councilmember Fuller had a couple more comments than I had as well. So if we can just.
Are we moving?
All of it.
All of it. Well, I just wanted to comment that, number one, I appreciate the way the budget was presented. It was succinct, easy to understand, had many good lines in it that brought it about, and very well done. And I'm happy on more. I'm always happy when we have more money. I'm always happy when that occurs. There's a couple of things. The stormwater, I'm, this is a tender spot up here for a reason, we'll go in, but the stormwater is eventually running, and it's going to be expensive to come here. Other cities are going to, to it, and I hope we find some ways. I'm glad we're setting aside money, because I really am at it, but no new taxes. And I would not, so I'm looking, we do have that expense coming forward. When I say, I say, just as soon as I say, no new taxes, the untenable part, there are, there, she allowed me a discussion, which is the whole budget, right?
The, yeah, this is, we have a motion on the floor, but this is, I understand, this is dialogue on the, on the budget, the mid-year budget.
Yeah, I asked for discussion. So the parcels in there, the parcels that are, the parcels for lighting and landscaping are over budget in certain parcels. We can, until we're taking that out of the general fund, we either have to cut services there or figure out what we're going to do. I think talking with the citizens there would be good. I will listen if there is a parcel set of residents in a small parcel that want to come together that would vote themselves a tax increase. I won't guarantee it, but I will listen, listen to that to a small number. And that's, that's it. Thank you.
I know we have a motion and a second on the floor, but I'm going to take a couple seconds to make my comments as well, since I extended it to Councilmember Fuller. So the budget review itself, very well put together, great presentation. Thank you. We talked about such important things, Cypress, the library, and the seniors, and obviously a lot more. Cypress has been such a, such a big thing. The library, I absolutely support the $3 million to make it as great of a library as we can. And again, Friends of the Oakley Library did an amazing job. And I want to thank all the volunteers and businesses that supported those efforts. And for the seniors, I had one question, but I'm gonna leave that one to last. I am going to make a comment, multi-generational is great for programming, not necessarily for advisory, okay? And the hours, you know, like we talked about, different isn't always bad, but it has to start somewhere, and the hours are what they are now. It doesn't mean that they wouldn't potentially change if we see that need, expand, adjust, whatever that case may be. But I do want to thank the staff and all the committee members for all the work that went into the committee meetings. We originally were looking at putting this at our library. And it was due to this committee that we realized the better space for the seniors brought up by the seniors was the community center. And we wouldn't have necessarily come to that without those committee meetings, and I really wanted to highlight that. The meal programs going from one day a week to four days a week, that's amazing. The dedicated hangout space where the seniors can come, and whether there's programming or not, can just be there, can have coffee in the morning, can eat their lunch, and maybe fall asleep in front of the TV after, because there's a nice comfy couch there. That's, that's all good. Also, I want to make the senior club, the senior center club, gosh, OSC, you may get more reach for potential new members based on the exposure you get from the residents that are not, that are not members now, because you get to hang out with people that are, that are coming that weren't necessarily members of your club. So just look at it as an expansion opportunity. And then as your membership grows, you can provide more of those great bus trips, and not just the casino ones, if that's what the residents want, or your. and not just the casino ones, if that's what the residents want, or your ice cream socials, or, you know, the, the fun. I get, like I mentioned, you get to be the fun maker. Like, you get to stop worrying about the programming and really put that on the city, and you guys get to focus on the socialization, which is so needed for seniors.
I did have one question, Jerry. With the summer programming, that's not gonna interrupt the lunch program four days a week, though, right?
It will not.
And that's all I had. We still have.
I can make one clarification on the, the funding that we're approving tonight, the hundred and fifty-three thousand. I just want to make clear, staff is proposing, we still wait to know what that grant funding is before we actually start spending. So I just want to make sure that's clear, that if you approve that tonight, we're not gonna go, you know, paint the building tomorrow.
So it's so that way, when the grant comes, we don't have to wait for the next council meeting if it comes between meetings.
Correct. I anticipate hearing next week, fingers crossed, everybody, that whether or not, what that funding is and the timing of that funding. I know it's reimbursable. As long as we can start spending it, we will, and then we'll receive that reimbursement.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. I still have a motion? I'm asking.
Honestly, I, I think we should have probably already gone to it, but yeah.
I still have a second?
Yes, you still have a second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor with the change of waiving the fees, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, we are, thank you all for your participation. We are going to move into item seven point one, City Manager Joshua McMurray. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I've been asked for a five-minute break. We will return in five minutes. Thank you. All right, welcome back. We are going to move on to item seven point one, City Manager Report. City Manager Joshua McMurray.
Thank you again. Although not on the agenda, we do have Holly here with Koa Hills, and we have a short presentation prepared to kind of give an update on where we are with our EERP system upgrade. And I would like to defer the rest of my time to her and this presentation.
Hello again. How are all you, all of you? Mayor Shaw, Vice Mayor Henderson, council members. Once again, my name is Holly Orunian, and I have the privilege to be the project manager for the city's Tyler Enterprise ERP implementation. Down arrow, right? Got it. Perfect. So just a quick reminder, when I was first here in July of twenty twenty-three, we only had one phase, and that was finance. Finance went live in July of twenty twenty-four. HRM phase is now live as of January of this year, and we are in full force with our EP and L implementation, which is set to go live in October. So this is just a timeline review. You can see those beautiful green checkmarks are where we have gone live on time and on budget. And we are currently implementing business licensing and enterprise permitting and licensing, and we'll talk a little bit about that at the end of my presentation. So let's dive into some finance updates. As I mentioned, we have been live on finance since July of twenty twenty-four. And I was here in July of last year to announce that we had gone live, but since that time, work has continued. And since my last update, our assess and define phase has gone up fifteen percent. Our prepare solution phase has gone up six percent. Our production readiness has gone up five percent, and our production phase has gone up forty-six percent, and our closure phase is up ninety-seven percent. So we are close to being complete with all of our tasks. However, there are a few things that we are still working on. Just want to emphasize that go-live is really just a beginning point in time. So while we're officially live on finance, there's still a tremendous amount of work that needs to be done to refine specifically with developer deposits, vendor self-service, credit card processing, capital assets, personnel budget, and final conversion. So work continues. Now, I, I want, I wish there were drum rolls or sound effects, but we are live on HRM, which is huge. And I'd like to really focus the majority of my time. Thank you for giving me your whole time. It's not as short as it might be. So just to talk about HRM, we went live in January. At the time of my last visit in July, we've, you know, had tremendous growth here. Our assess and define up twelve percent, prepare solution up fifty percent, final testing and training up ninety-one percent, and production cut over up seventy-seven percent. We haven't start, started closure tasks yet, because we just went live. But this project team, I, I have some special shout-outs to this project team in just a moment. But I do want to highlight for council some of the benefits of the HRM system. So enhanced efficiency and cost savings. It automates payroll, timekeeping, and benefits, reducing administrative work. We have streamlined time and attendance management. This simplifies our scheduling, managing overtime, and ensures compliance. And this is ideal for complex departments like, of course, public safety. Also, we have empowered employee self-service. This allows employees to update information, request leave, and access pay and tax documents anytime, anywhere, from any device. Some more benefits. Improved data accuracy and compliance. These self-service tools, we found, actually reduce errors and help meet regulatory requirements, because people are fixing their own information. Seamless integration across all departments. One of the things I mentioned when I first spoke with you all is the beauty of an integrated seamless enterprise resource management system is that all of the modules talk to each other, so we don't have to have intermediary files and integrations that are created. So this promotes the smooth data flow between HR, payroll, and finance, and it improves collaboration and efficient, efficiency between those departments. And finally, direct integration with finance. So this links our labor costs directly to budgets for real-time tracking and accurate financial reporting. One of the things that I've shown as we've started each phase is a resource allocation model. And just to refresh your memory, I typically see in projects for Tyler ERP implementations, a ratio of five hours to one. So in the contract, Tyler tells us how many hours they're gonna spend helping us implement the software. We have to follow that up with extensive hours beyond that hour. So because of the, the complexity of this implementation, our overall ratio was seven to one, and I just want to explain that. Every department, every supervisor, every employee played a part, and the core project team dedicated significant time to ensure a smooth rollout. Finance implementation is very complex. HRM is as well. Strangely enough, people are very sensitive that they get paid the right amount. So we have to make sure that that is accurate, and that takes a ton of just diligent painstaking validation. While familiarity with the Tyler system from the finance project team helped streamline efforts, it brought its own complexities and challenges. This milestone of go-live really reflects this amazing project team's hard work and commitment, but the work continues. And there are several key areas I'd like to highlight that we are still working on. So again, we've been live about a month, and the journey continues. And just like with finance, go-live is a moment in time. While we're officially live on HRM, time and attendance has been particularly challenging for us to set up. We're actively working through the complexities to ensure that all functions, overtime, leave requests, accruals are functioning as intended. Tyler is supporting us in this effort, but this is an ongoing process. And for transparency, I just want you to know that that implementation has been challenging. In addition, the reporting out of the HRM system is significantly different than what the project team and staff are used to. So making that crosswalk, figuring out like-for-like reports, and getting the information out of the system in a way that's digestible and familiar is also an ongoing part of our implementation. And finally, in the sake of transparency, I want to make sure that council understands that the project team and staff are still. that the project team and staff are still performing dual payrolls. That means that the finance HRM payroll team is running a full payroll in your legacy system and a full payroll in the new system. And the reason for this is we want to make absolutely sure that every single cent is accounted for and equates to what it should be. So our hope is that that won't last very, much longer. Yes, and we're getting, we're getting to that point. So I just really want to highlight the significant amount of time that staff is spending entering time in two systems and that the payroll team is spending running those payrolls. And I extend my great appreciation to them for taking that on. And on that note, I would like to take a moment to, to say some thank yous at this point. When I was here in July of twenty-three, I made mention that it's really important for council to support these projects. And I mentioned that a lot of times there are projects that are, you know, more exciting. I will say a library is more exciting. I love books. A library can be considered more exciting. A new senior center can be considered more exciting. But I will tell you, in my world, there's nothing more exciting than ERP software. So I'm a nerd that way. But I do want to say to the council, your continued support for essential projects like the Tyler ERP implementation has really been instrumental in laying a strong foundation for both current and future city initiatives. Your leadership and commitment to innovation enabled the city to improve efficiency, transparency, and services for the community. So I extend my sincere gratitude for your support for this project. Josh, the City Manager, thank you for your strategic oversight and dedication to guiding the city through transformative projects. Your vision and leadership have been critical to the success of this implementation. Danielle, our Assistant City Manager, your operational expertise and steadfast support ensured the project stayed aligned with the city's goals and values. Your role in coordinating efforts across all departments helped drive this on-time, on-budget go-live. Jerry Tejada, Administrative Services Director, I want to thank you for your leadership and coordination. You have been the backbone of this project, managing resources, navigating challenges, and fostering collaboration across departments was no easy task, but your efforts ensured we stayed on course. To Carolina Camacho, our Finance Manager, her financial acumen and attention to detail were crucial in maintaining fiscal accuracy and ensuring that the new system aligned with city's financial goals. Lisandra Sip, our human, uh, Human Resources Manager, her expertise was invaluable in streamlining HR processes and guiding the team through system changes. Her focus on employee needs and organizational structure kept HR operations steady. And Haylin Bermudez, our Payroll Specialist, her precision and dedication to navigating the complex payroll setup and ensuring that employees continued to be paid accurately and on time during this implementation and throughout the transition. That was our core project team, and I just wanted to express my thanks to them. I also, on behalf of the entire project team, it was important to everyone that we extend our deepest appreciation to all departments for their dedication, adaptability, and teamwork. Learning a new system while maintaining day-to-day operations is no small feat, and their commitment ensured a smooth transition with minimal disruption. And finally, to the finance and HR staff who kept things going with our daily operations. While the core project team had to focus tremendous hours on the implementation, your hard work has not gone unnoticed. There are also a few Tyler resources I would like to really highlight. We had some incredible resources from Tyler Technology. Charlene Proventure, she was our HR and payroll consultant. Mike Howell was our timekeeping consultant, and Michelle Schulte was our Tyler PM. These three really took to heart, making sure that we went live, they were on-site for the go-live, and I think they really understood what a special place Oakley is, and so they wanted to be there for that. That's HR. Go-live. So the third phase, which is running right now, is our EPNL implementation. And this focuses on configuring and integrating enterprise permitting and licensing. That includes business licensing to streamline permitting, licensing, inspections, and other financial processes. So this phase hadn't even started the last time I was here. We started this in September. And this phase is already rocking and rolling through. They have finished several phases, which I will talk about in a minute. But before we get there, I'd like to introduce you to the project team. Ken Strilo, who's our Community Development Director, as you know, and he's also the project sponsor. As the sponsor, he provides strategic leadership, ensuring the EPNL implementation supports the city's community development goals while championing cross-departmental collaboration. So that is Ken. We also have Conrad Frome, our Chief Building Official. He plays a vital role in aligning the permitting and inspection, inspection process and ensuring compliance with building codes. Billy Lee Sangshalern is our Engineering Manager, and she brings essential technical expertise to integrate engineering workflows and enhance efficiency in project reviews and strengthening coordination across departments. Evan Gorman, Associate Planner, has been focusing on zoning and land use elements, helping to tailor system to reflect accurate planning requirements. Jose Cortez, our Senior Planner, ensures the system supports both current and long-term planning projects, providing valuable insights into complex planning processes. And Jerry Tejada, Administrative Services Coordinator, plays the critical role in managing the financial, financial integrations as EPNL needs to integrate with cashiering and finance. So the milestones, we're almost done, I promise. The initiate and plan phase is already complete. And in the process of doing the initiate and plan phase, the team really took a step back to evaluate the needs of business licensing. And during that time, the business licensing suite that was originally procured for, through basically the financial system, wasn't as robust as business licensing. So once again, the Oakley team gets together and thinks, what do we need to do to satisfy our needs today? Provisioning for the future. So we did incorporate EPNL business licensing. We've also completed our assess and define phase. This means that we have had subject matter expert training on all core areas of EPNL and configuration training. So we are now in the throes of the prepare solution phase, and this is about a third of the way complete. This is where we take all of our business process maps and configure those in the system. So the team is actively working in the system, setting up applications, business processes, workflow. And our next steps are really just to complete that configuration, begin testing, and start on conversion. Yes, thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I did want to say that a lot of times money spent and time spent on front-facing projects get a lot of attention. And it's the day-to-day and the behind-the-scenes that really kind of get out of sight, out of mind. So I want to thank all of the staff and your team for everything that you have done to make this work. And I wish the seniors were still here so they can see that they're not the only ones dealing with big changes. So. But with that, Councilmember Williams.
You know, I have to always ask questions. So first of all, it's been flawless, right? I think a few years ago when you came to us, I was like, oh, God, I've been through these implementations and they're horrific. I mean, I, I'm sure we can pull up the, the video to say that. So it's, it's been very smooth and flawless. Obviously, I'm in a different role than I was when I was in those positions. So I know for Jerry, it hasn't always been the smoothest. I guess my question is, and I, you know, you both said that that payroll duplicity isn't going to keep happening. Do we have, and I, one, is that common, that that is happening? Two, there, there is an end in sight for you guys, I'm hoping, it sounds like?
I'm happy to answer that. I think the dual processing is, is normal to, to an extent. We did it for approximately six or seven payrolls, actually, before we went live. We're just not at a spot where we're comfortable. We're not comfortable with all the setup yet. And until we reach that comfort level, so I, I wish I could give you a timeline. I, I'm sure the rest of the team wants a timeline as well. But I, I think the timeline is until we're confident in what the new system is doing. Then we'll, we haven't been able to do a single payroll where there hasn't been like a major something that went wrong. And so we haven't really got to see it fully yet. So with that, a lot of it is set up. Some of it is simply things that are unforeseeable that we just didn't plan for. So I, I, I'm confident in saying we're going to do at least two more payrolls that way, which will be this week and, and, and two weeks from then. And after that, we'll, we'll kind of play it by ear. We're so close to the end of the quarter now. We might take it one more so that we get a full quarter, and we can compare quarterly reports and, and those types of things. So I want there to be an end in sight, but I also want to be confident in the new system before we make that change.
And then has this been kind of the only sort of sticky point where you're having to do these sort of double?
It has. I mean, we, we've struggled in several areas. The timekeeping system. We didn't have a great resource to start off with from Tyler. We, we had to do some, a little, a little fighting to get what we needed with Tyler. They, we have a great project manager, Michelle, who reached out to resources and found us finally a resource that really understood what we needed. And our goal in time and attendance wasn't just to take what we were doing and plug that in to the new timekeeping system. Our goal was to improve the timekeeping system, and, and we really wanted to take all of the manual stuff out of that. And, and so that's why it's been a challenge. I think we're asking for things that a lot of cities maybe haven't asked for to automate. And they, Tyler didn't have resources that were used to those asks. And so we, we finally have found someone who understands our needs. He understands the system. So he's able to get us where we need to be. We're just a little behind on that. So every time, every, every pay period, we find something different. We tweak it, we fix it. Every fix breaks something else. So we're just kind of in that roller coaster right now. But staff has been amazing. I think we're in the, we refuse to fail stage. So we're powering through, and, and as Holly said, it's the entire city staff. It's not just the core team. Everybody's in it with us. Everybody's doing time cards twice. Everybody's living through the changes. Change is hard, right? Change is very hard. But when it's done, I think it's going to be great.
Awesome. I mean, I think all of that is probably just a testimony to the work that you guys are doing, right? Like, to be the city that found these sort of things, because you guys want to make it better and better, I think, is just a testimony to the great work. And, you know, like Mayor Shaw said, this isn't the sexy, you know, forward-facing stuff, but it is the stuff that's going to allow us to be able to do that sexy forward-facing stuff. So I really appreciate the work, and I really appreciate you guys insulating us because I was prepared for it to suck. I'm sorry it does for you right now, but good job, everybody. Good job.
On the outside, it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are moving on to seven point two A, which is reports from council liaisons to regional committees, commissions, boards. And Vice Mayor Henderson.
Since our last meeting, I attended Iron House Sanitation District. Probably the big notable thing for our community, they did approve a rate increase effective June first, twentieth of two percent. And they did that through their Prop two eighteen process from a couple of years ago. So they didn't have to re-go out to the public for the rate increase. But I'm also anticipating we'll see another process next year.
Councilmember Williams.
All right. Not that much this week, or to report on for this week. I went to the mayor's conference because I'm the vice chair, so I am going to those. We got a presentation on postcards from San Francisco. It was presented to us by a former reporter from San Francisco Chronicle, and he's also an urban planner. And at first, I was like, what are we, what are we doing this for? But the really interesting thing that he was talking about was how neighborhoods, specifically in San Francisco, but something that we can utilize everywhere, have to reinvent themselves, right? With the Macy's pulling out and with all these larger traditional retails, retailers, they've had to really reinvent themselves in a lot of neighborhoods. And what would have traditionally been a, a single storefront is now divided into four different ones, and it's really kind of revitalizing the neighborhood. So it was really interesting to watch that presentation. He also talked about upzoning for mixed use, lots of commercial plus residential. And then the really interesting thing was a lot of, they're doing a lot of waterfront parks, and they're directing a lot of funding there. So it just made me think of our fifty-five acre park. And we also had a presentation on the California Golden Promise package of bills, which included fire safety bills. All of the bills were required to be in by February twenty-first. So we kind of have a good idea of what the legislation is now working on. I also went to the Contra Costa Central Committee. We heard a lot from our county public defender who represents the most vulnerable people in cases. They were talking about some programs that are helping with job placement, justice involvement, called the Clean Slate Program. It also includes a strategic litigation and research unit, a social work and reentry services unit. There was a potential for a state budget cut to the Public Defense Pilot Program grant. But there is funding that's been redone. So those, that funding to address inequities in sentencing will just continue to need advocacy from all of our cities. So that was it. This is a busy week. So next meeting, I'll have longer reports.
Looking forward to it. Councilmember Meadows.
Me too. Since our last meeting, I attended CCTA meeting last week, last Wednesday, which one of the items that we approved was a lump sum payment to the CalPERS in the amount of just over two point four million to keep our liabilities funded. We don't have any unfunded liabilities. We also discussed or had a presentation on the status of Measure J Growth Management Program Compliance Checklist approvals. June. They lack them before June. And, and then I was also, I will be the chair for CCTA for this upcoming year. And then last Thursday, I attended MCE's Board of Directors Meeting. We, we accepted a five million dollar grant from the California Energy Commission for our virtual power plant, which is across the whole service area. We, we reviewed the two thousand twenty-five priorities. And that review took probably an hour and a half. It was long, very long. I'm there. And then we reviewed the, the upcoming budget that we'll be working on next month. And that's all.
Since, since our last meeting on the twelfth, I attended the Oakley Chamber of Commerce event at the Beer Isle. I did a virtual ILG training sponsored by CalCities. On the thirteenth, the mayor's conference. Thanks, Councilmember Williams, for reporting on the presenter. But one other thing that happened is at this meeting, I was elected to represent the mayor's conference on the East Bay Regional Communications Systems Board. On the fourteenth, along with the city manager, had a meeting with the East Bay Regional Parks District. They're working on updating their master plan and reaching out to all mayors and city managers. We, on the eighteenth, ribbon cutting for Quick Quack Car Wash. On the nineteenth, I attended CCTA as an alternate through the mayor's conference, but there is so much to learn that I just feel like it's important to attend those. On the twentieth, MCE board orientation. As your alternate here for the council, it's mandatory to do this orientation if I ever have to attend as an alternate. And immediately after, I did stay for most of the meeting, but it was long and I snuck out. On the twenty-second, I had a meeting with residents regarding our mid-year budget review, some questions they had regarding the senior programming and some library discussion. And later that night, I did the, attended the Elderly Wish Foundation fundraiser. Wednesday is Tri Delta, and Friday is my first eBrix meeting. And we will move on to seven point two B. Any requests for future agenda items?
Councilmember Meadows.
I would like to request we have a discussion on short-term rentals in the downtown Oakley area.
A discussion on what?
Short-term rentals in the downtown Oakley area.
Like a work session sort of situation?
Yes.
Okay. I'm in. I think it's valid all second.
I think it's valid all second.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item eight, Work Session 8.1, Work Session Update from Mount Diablo Resource Recovery, Joshua McMurray.
Yeah. Good evening again. Just to frame the discussion, the city has been in agreement with Mount Diablo Resource Recovery since 2010 to provide solid waste recycling services in the city. I've had the opportunity since 2010 to this point in several capacities to work with Mount Diablo Resource Recovery. And they are a fantastic partner in the community and provide, I think, an exceptional level of quality to our residents and businesses here. And the purpose of this work session is to hear a presentation that they've prepared. But at the end, we have been talking very high level about the potential for a new franchise agreement, an amended agreement. But we would first like to get direction from the council to start negotiating that with Mount Diablo Resource Recovery. And we feel like this is a good first step to kind of introduce that to the council. So with that, I'll turn this over to Mount Diablo Resource Recovery and this is, who's doing the presentation? Sarah? All right. Both of you. Okay.
And then how do I? Okay. Good evening, council. I'm Sarah Davis with Mount Diablo Resource Recovery. We are here to provide an overview and discussion of our current franchise agreement and our desire to extend our term. Before I hand it over to Sal for the official part of it, I did want to touch a little bit about our company. So every company and organization has a mission, vision, and philosophy. But for us, it's strictly about the commitment, the customer, and the services that we provide. So I love this slide because it really just kind of showcases who we are as an organization. And I will tell you that after discussion today, we're going to change our logo right there and put the customer there. So just envision that there's, that's not there and it's our customers. So safety and collection quality, we don't miss pickups. We show up where we're supposed to. We work with our customers to make sure that their services work for them. If there's a discrepancy or an issue, we are able to rectify it almost immediately. We work directly with city staff if those situations occur. But our collections team is pretty stellar. Customer services are always our number one focus. We make ourselves available to our customers. We want to make sure that we're providing the customer experience that we hope that they have and that they hope that they will get when they contact us. We've implemented chat and texting, email, phone call. We have an office in each one of our jurisdictions so that customers can walk in, ask questions, have discussions, pay their bills, try to make it as easy and convenient for our customers to get in touch with us. Sustainability, we're a very sustainable company. We have our reuse, a reuse program where we pick up items that individuals may not want or need anymore that are still in good condition and find homes for them all across Contra Costa County. We work very closely with markets to make sure that the material that's going into our blue carts is actually getting recycled, making sure that our cities are staying in compliance as well. Technology, we've installed cameras on each one of our trucks. We've updated our equipment at the transfer station, always looking for ways to improve and stay at the forefront. Education and outreach has always been extremely important to our company. We are constantly looking for information and talking points to put out, whether it's repeat questions, reminders, changes in the recycling world, but always trying to be very transparent with our customers and make sure that we're communicating on a regular basis. And then community engagement, I think that everybody here has seen personally that we are engaged in our communities. It's something that I am extremely proud to be a part of in my position, but we are not just a garbage company. We're not a logo and a sponsorship. We show up and we're present and we take a lot of pride in being a part of our communities. So with that, oh, I do want to bring up that I hope everybody remembers, it was a couple of years ago that we were voted most community-minded company in the city of Oakley. We'll get that again, but I just wanted to leave that there as I introduce Sal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. That's why Sarah doesn't get to go work for someone else. We value her tremendously. And the items that she just went through, it's, she did save the best for last with community engagement. It is what we pride ourselves on. It is how we differentiate ourselves from other garbage companies and other companies overall, that we do want people involved in the community. And we are very grateful that we have that ability. So at a very high level, I just had a couple of slides I wanted to go through. So our current agreement, every franchise agreement we have with the different jurisdictions we have, each have their own unique nuances. And I appreciate this being done during a study session. Please stop me along the way or at the end of each slide if there are any questions. Our current agreement is effective as of 2010. However, our original agreement goes back to the days of Iron House Sanitary District before the city was incorporated. So we have already went through the process once in the city of Oakley of going through a new agreement or what we are wanting to consider now, which is an amended and restated franchise agreement. All of our agreements, in their very basic form, have some sort of annual cost adjustment. I will tell you the way Oakley does it is the way that we prefer. It's the same way the city of Concord does it, same way the city of Rio Vista, and that is that it is a multi-index rate adjustment. We have a few cities remaining that are still on a straight CPI, and that a lot of times doesn't keep up either with labor, the cost of fuel, or the exact circumstances of the service area. And the whole purpose for those annual RRI's is for them to be relatively low but keep up with the cost of living. So that way, if not for a new unfunded state mandate, your base rate, which happens every five years, the goal is to minimize that. We have language in our agreement where if it wasn't for a new unfunded state mandate and your base rate came in at only about 2%, your rates stay flat. You know, some of our agreements have that language. So it's really meant to keep up with the cost of living. But every year, we're very transparent. We're, unlike a lot of other private companies in that, we're an open book. We submit audited financials whenever the city asks. We do it as a requirement every five years as part of the base rate, where the city gets to ensure that we don't get to make more profit than the contract allows. So we have a strict operating ratio baked into our contract that no matter what, every five years, if all of a sudden we've made too much in between, the rates don't go up. So the city is always protected in that. And that five-year base rate program is also the way that you implement new programs, like we did with SB 1383, and like we will probably eventually have to do with a transition to a zero emission fleet. Right now with the current administration in DC, that is kind of being slowed down a little bit for California. But as we know, California is very environmentally progressive when it comes to the United States, and it really does set the tone in whether it's producer responsibility, recycling. So while we think some rules may slow down, we are in an industry where these rules never go away. Quite honestly, it'll maybe help infrastructure come along before those mandates come in. We also pay the city franchise fees. You just went through your budget. I think we're probably approximately 1.6 million around there in franchise fees that we pay to the city. So when you look at stable revenue sources, after property taxes and sales taxes, your franchise fees, as you know, are the next most stable. So we're very proud to be a stable revenue stream to the city with those franchise fees. Our new, our contract today, everyone has to understand, I'm going through this right now in all of our cities. We have some cities that have 13 amendments to our agreement, and they're like, look, we need to clean this up. You have some amendments that aren't even valid. Well, that's not the case with Oakley. The agreement is so old, it was before a lot of modern contract provisions are put into place that have the ability for the city to charge liquidated damages, to hold us accountable if we're not doing the good job that Sarah is talking about. But it's also to provide continuity to performance standards that gives the city the ability, if there was a truck that was leaking oil, if there was a missed pickup and things ever went a little bit aside the way they are in some other cities where there are thousands of missed pickups. We are lucky of the men and women we have. They work very hard. We have good morale. But I just want to bring to your attention another reason and benefit for a city to look at a new agreement is to memorialize what the current practice is, to memorialize what the current performance is. Our current agreement does not have a mandate for community benefits or outreach. So there's a lot of things that we do today that if a jurisdiction wanted to bake in and make part of the agreement, there's that ability. Our current agreement ends in five years, and while that may sound like a long way away, if a jurisdiction wants to change providers, it's usually a three-year process because you have to have time for a new provider to order trucks, bins, carts, and equipment. So we are quite honestly wanting to have this discussion, and we've been broaching the subject with the city manager for about a year now, mainly because of the last bullet, which is the requirements for us from our bank. We're not a Wall Street company. We are a Main Street company. As a Main Street company, we need traditional financing that is very specific with loan covenants that look at our agreements and the length of our agreement and the interest rates that we are charged and the amount of credit that is extended to us directly ties to the length of our agreements. So it's a very unique relationship that we have. I want to pause there before I go to the next slide if there's any questions on this slide. So what would a new and modern franchise agreement look like? I refer to this as an amended and restated agreement. I will let the city attorney's office refer to it as whatever they like. That's what some other cities are doing. But it's basically a refreshed commitment. You know, I recently went to a wedding ceremony for an aunt and uncle that were renewing their wedding vows, and it was touching, but it's truly the relationship we have here with the city. It's a long-term relationship. We've been very proud of that long-term relationship. And when you look at refreshing an agreement, you know, to almost use the analogy, you don't, you don't have a prenup right now. You have a franchise agreement that if we're not performing, you could call us in default. There are very, very few performance standards in our agreement, and I don't want to hide the fact, the main reason we're in front of you is because we are looking to talk about a longer term. But with that, we don't get to come ask for that for free. We know, because we're doing this in other jurisdictions, what comes with that is that new commitment. It's that renewed commitment. It's that new and modern agreement that has service-level standards that hold us accountable to where if Sarah was to change jobs or hit the lottery or move, which we don't want her to do, but that happens in life. People change, companies grow. We want to make sure that the legacy of the relationship, the Garavanna family has had with the city of Oakley, is a legacy type of service that remains. And what ensures that type of legacy performance is a good agreement. You know, I don't like to over, over lawyer things, but I will tell you, we have very good agreements in other jurisdictions that are very large, that have rate manuals, that have a very prescribed method, that also ensure as city staff turns over and you have people, again, it's that long-term consistency. So as part of this, there could also be the consideration of additional services. Sarah mentioned the reuse program. We do that for the Central Contra Costa Solid Waste Authority, which is six jurisdictions in Central Contra Costa County. We've been doing a pilot in our other jurisdictions to gauge whether their community would like it or not. That is an example of something that could be implemented. There are other new services that we would love the opportunity to sit with your staff and negotiate and come back to you with. As I said, it's a way to memorialize our current practices, programs, services, and expectations to ensure that long-term stability. Performance standards with the ability of the city to levy liquidated damages if we're not performing. So again, we know that we do a good job and we're prepared to be held to that standard. We want to talk about community investment and community benefit in a way that that could be folded into this. We do participate and we're very proud of that, and we want to look at how that could be enhanced. And at the end of the day, the term that we are asking for consideration of is what we have in four of our other contracts right now, which is called an Evergreen contract. So in four of our jurisdictions, we have, so this isn't something we're asking Oakley to go first on. I have a saying that I copied from the Pittsburgh city manager that I use all the time. I always like to be first in line to go third and let three other people figure out what went right, what went wrong, and perfect it. In this case, we have four other contracts that have Evergreen provisions that have a term that renews every year unless the city says, no, this is not something we want. That term in all of those jurisdictions are 15-year terms, and what that allows is from a financing standpoint, for us to continue to invest in our fleet, in our facilities, and in our operations. It lets us amateurize and depreciate those costs over that period on an annual basis, which at the end of the day, lets us bring the lowest possible cost to the rate payer because we spread everything out over fi, over five-year base rate cycles. So you have to think about a 15-year cycle is three of those major deep-dive rate reviews. And this is the cadence that we are trying to get all of our jurisdictions on. The one jurisdiction that does not have that is Contra Costa County. We are renewing that agreement with them as we speak, and that contract, when it was issued, was a 40-year contract. You know, it was a 20-year with a 15-year option and then another five years. So you know, you weigh out an Evergreen versus these other very long-defined contracts. They're kind of six of one, half dozen of another. The goal for us as a Main Street company, again, is being able to spread out the cost of compliance, deliver the lowest cost possible to the city, and in exchange, have that new, modern, renewed agreement that lets the city look at what are, what are best-in-class examples that new franchises that are being issued in other jurisdictions have, and to learn from them and to build something that is right for Oakley. I'm not looking to make it cookie cutter. What's right for one city isn't right for all cities. We are committed to this community. We've been here. We want to continue to be here, and we'd love to continue to talk about how with staff we could renew this relationship. So the respectful ask is, as the city manager indicated, is with the consideration of the council, to be able to work with staff in a collaborative fashion on a term sheet. You know, we don't want to get too far out ahead of anything. You know, you're not quite at that window where you'd have to decide if you were going out to bid or not. But we think, and I say this very humbly, hat in hand, I think we've at least earned the professional courtesy based upon our commitment to the city, our commitment to service and dedication to at least have the opportunity to sit and see what something like that would look like and bring it back to all of you for your consideration. That's my last slide. I'm hoping I get some questions or discussions, but I appreciate the opportunity to be able to be here this evening and can happily go back to any slide that you request.
All right. Do I have any questions or comments from the council for either staff or Sal and/or Sarah? Councilmember Williams.
So I think when people see something like this, residents, I think they're worried about the rate increase. So can you, a potential rate increase. So you talked about unfunded mandates and spreading it out. So potentially, if we had been in sort of this Evergreen cycle, when all of the SB 1383 stuff came and we had to raise our rates, and I still keep hearing about it from people. So is there the potential that something like that would at least be buffered because it could be spread out longer? Or with something so extreme as that was, would that still come up? I just, we need a way to reassure our rate payers that just because it's an Evergreen contract doesn't mean that they're going to get this ever-increasing rates, is what I guess I'm saying.
So with S, that's a great question. With SB 1383, there were specific state mandates that... With SB 1383, there were specific state mandates that had certain requirements by certain dates. So on that, what really pushed and drove that rate increase was the fact that the city of Oakley's programs had every other week green waste. So you had to add those trucks to have a program that was in compliance, and that was state law. But wherever there's a mandate, so I will give you the example, we have to switch out our carts and cart colors for the garbage container. That, we worked with your staff to spread out over three base rate cycles so that way it could minimize the cost. As long as we have contract term, we could do that. And as long as that's the case when it comes to other capital, when it comes to Oakley paying its fair share of improvements that we make at our transfer station, yes, councilmember, the goal is to spread it out over the longest period possible. And this type of contract not only lets us do that, but it lowers our cost of borrowing, which again, goes back to the rate payer. Because again, we're only allowed to make so much. You guys have that hammer over our head with that base rate review process to ensure that that doesn't get out of control and that that's with what is reasonable.
Councilmember Meadows.
It's an interesting picture, Sal. Got the garbage coming all the way out the door. It's a hell of a pile there. So Oakley disposal, MDRR, Garavanna family served the community well for many, many years. And so ISD's contract only started in 93? Doesn't matter. So, but you guys have, the Garavanna family served our community well for many, many years. And I, I, I think they will continue to. I'm, I'm not opposed to an evergreen contract, but we, we will need to definitely protect ourselves because we don't know what the future's going to look like for MDRR. And so because of that, you know, I, I want to make sure we're protected. We don't want to get stuck with substandard service from somebody else. So I will be expecting that and looking at that.
And I appreciate that comment very much. As you know, a lot of private families will get eventually to a certain point. And what's nice is being able to put in level of service qualities and LDs and really tighten up the contract. Another opportunity you would have is to put in language, what would it look like in the future if the city ever had to consider an assignment?
Say that again.
Assignment. So let's say sometime in the future, the city had to consider whether it wanted to assign the contract or not. All new and modern agreements have the exact provisions you were talking about that gives the city that hammer to ensure that the performance you're getting today, the commitment to the community you're getting today, whether it's myself, whether it's Sarah, we want the contract, and again, that renewed relationship or prenup, as I want to call it. We want to make sure that that is the legacy that is preserved, no matter who is at the helm, and we're all for giving you all those protections in the contract. So I, I welcome and appreciate the comment.
Vice Mayor Henderson.
My question's kind of on the line of councilmember Meadows there. So in an evergreen situation, the city would have the ability, if there was a change of ownership or a change of company, and we weren't receiving the outstanding service that we're receiving today, to call that contract in and have those discussions?
Absolutely. There are, there are evergreen contracts where you could put a provision in, and again, this would be part of a negotiation and a term sheet. But it could be that if ever there was a sale, that an evergreen converts to a strict 15-year. Or that there's a period where you get to see, does performance stay? You know what I'm saying? So you, there always has to be the understanding that if capital is being extended on behalf of the city and the rate payer at the lowest cost possible, there's that balance of, you know, both sides wanting to be protected. But the biggest hammer that the city has is, again, your current agreement has very little to no performance standards, abilities for liquidated damages, and criteria that new and modern agreements do that ensure you have that consistency to where you can get out of the contract. You can then change providers.
Okay.
And again, all of those options are on the table when it comes to a new agreement.
And I would agree with councilmember Meadows, that's going to be an important factor to see is that. The other thing I'm kind of interested in, you said there were other services that you're looking to bring or at least bring to the table for the community. What kind of services are you guys thinking in that area?
Sure. So our next base rate occurs in 2027. So that would be the time that you weigh out and look, okay, what is the revenue the company has made? Are there new services? That would be the way you introduce something new into the rate. So what I would offer to do as part of these negotiations and discussions are if there was a program that the city was interested. So say it was this reuse program. I would have Sarah roll out a pilot in Oakley, similar to what we've done in other cities. You would be able to gauge and get feedback from your constituency if that program was utilized. So again, that's a program where residents were able to schedule through an app or a phone call or a website for us to come out and pick up reusable items that would otherwise have to be destined for the landfill, or you'd have to take to Goodwill or St. Vincent de Paul. Not a lot of people have trucks or vehicles to be able to do that. It's a very well-received program in the cities we do it. And then we work with local nonprofits to distribute that material for free and to keep it out of the landfill. And again, there are some great stories of different nonprofits that we have worked with in various cities. So that is one program that we're very proud of, that we think all of our jurisdictions should have. But that's an example of something where as part of this ask that we have with the new agreement, it could be, okay, Sal, I'll do a pilot, and then we want you to do it for free for a year at no cost to the rate payer so we could truly gauge what does it cost us? So then we could evaluate in the base year, do we want to add it or not? And then on an annual basis, there's always ways to pay for programs like that where you pay for what was used the prior year. So we're trying to work with all of our cities where we never want to be overcompensated for what we do. We don't want to be undercompensated. We want it to be something that's fair to where it drives participation, where it drives utilization, and we don't mind if we have to float the expense for a year as long as we're made whole and it's fair. So that's one example. You know, that's probably the premier program that we would love to do. Some cities, we do on-call scheduled bulky item pickup where people don't have the ability, maybe. You know, all of these things are good examples that can help reduce illegal dumping. There are quality of life issues that people appreciate if they have a car, if they're older and don't have the ability for a neighbor to help them move these type of items. And again, we could go through a laundry list of unique programs that other cities have and to gauge whether they're the right thing for the city of Oakley.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fuller.
Yes, I appreciate your service. I appreciate what you do for the community. There's no doubt you have excellent service. And I'm making sure it comes across. Just little things like the phone call that your trash won't be picked up today because Christmas was two days ago and that type of thing. So I'm impressed it goes there. I agree that you're very much icy at the will of state and national requirements as to the disposition of refuge. And I, I can understand that you don't, there isn't, I know you are watching it, but you're at the will of what would come about. So I think there's a need to, to look at all of that. And I don't have any problem with renegotiating it, opening the, reopening the contract. But I'm not a big fan of evergreen contracts. And I'm also, you're talking about innovation, you're talking about investments, you're talking about, oh, all sorts of neat, neat things to do. But if you suddenly find that we are financing an innovation because of a new contract and you have an extraordinary savings, I would like to see some of that savings come back to us or come back to the residents as well. So I'm, if you want, if they want, if you want to go through that, then yes.
I appreciate the comment, councilmember. And so you know, that's the way our current agreement works. So the way our current agreement works, if through the use of technology, we're able to be more efficient and we're able to reduce expense, our expenses each year, like I said, that RRI process looks year over year at certain expense categories, but then when it gets to that base rate year, if those expenses go down, you and your ratepayers get the benefit of that. So we don't get to keep financing technology to improve efficiencies to make more money. We have a, what's called an operating ratio. We are not allowed to make more than 10% profit on approximately 75% of our net expenses. Whereas the city, by contrast, gets to make a franchise fee of over 10% on 100% of our gross revenue. So we have a very strict formula that we do not get to make more than, and you get to have the open book of our audited financials to ensure that. So we're all about that transparency.
Thank you.
So, let's see, 2010 is our current agreement, and we, it ends in five years. So you're just asking to renew our vows at 15 years instead of 20, pretty much, and maybe with a little marriage counseling and some adjustments, that's what you're asking? Kind of right. I mean, if you're going to go with the prenup conversation, I thought.
We're here. We want to have another, you know, 25-year wedding anniversary. We love the city of Oakley. We want to grow with the city of Oakley.
Yeah, I, I agree with my colleagues up here. You've been a great community partner. I see it in all the different things and not even things that you guys are sponsoring. Tri Delta's doing a shred event, and you guys are there, and sponsoring so many of the activities that I go to, and just seeing you guys, even outside of Oakley and all the different things. So I think you guys are, are doing great. I think your community benefit is amazing. I'm definitely open to relooking at the contract. I'm open to the idea of an evergreen. But like the gentleman here said, just with some strong wording about, you know, potential change, making sure that we have some protections. I think there's a lot of trust between us and with the current. We don't know what that necessarily could look like, so just making sure we have some protections there, but I'm, I'm open to it as well.
Understood.
All right. Anyone else? You have enough from us? Have fun. Marriage counseling. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to be moving into item nine, which is closed session. I'm going to have our city attorney read out our closed session items.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This evening, the city council will do a litigation review of pending cases involving the city. So we will convene to discuss five litigation matters, which are existing litigation. The first is a case called Adler versus Oakley Police Department Officers. The second is a case called McAllister versus Mokel, in which the city is a defendant. The third case is Sundejas v. City of Oakley. The fourth case is the two cases by the Shafers versus BNSF Railway Company, and the city of Oakley is a defendant in that case. And then finally, a case called County of Contra Costa versus Monsanto, in which the city is a named plaintiff.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for coming and joining us tonight, and we will be adjourning after closed session.